Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 22. At 6:45, we are entering into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire chief contract, police chief contract. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session and then I'll read the rest of the agenda when we come out?
Yeah. I'm being 6:45. I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session, and I'll read it again, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, primarily the fire chief contract and police chief contract.
No second?
To exit into...
Oh, and then we'll come out of executive session to enter into public session.
Jim seconded that. All those in favor? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. We'll be back in a few minutes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 22, 2014. I'll read our agenda. 7:00 PM, Board of Selectmen update. 7:05 PM, citizens input. We'll have Chief O'Leary and Linda Walsh from the J.C.'s to talk about National Night Out Against Crime and other topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. 7:10, Foxborough Country Club, Kerry Pereira, change of manager. 7:20, public hearing, Muse Paint Bar LLC, wine and malt new license. 7:35, public hearing, Bass Pro, change of officers, directors. 7:50, public hearing, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, change of officers, directors. 8:00 PM, public hearing, increase in parking violation fines. 8:10 PM, Board of Selectmen Town Committee Handbook Approval. 8:20, Board of Selectmen action to consider filing legislation to hold a special election during the state election for a non-binding referendum question concerning site selection for Town Hall. 8:30, David Feldman, the Town Hall Working Group will give an update. And at 8:40 PM, Bill Keegan will give us a Town Manager update. John, can you lead us in?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just have a really quick update tonight. At our next Board of Selectmen's meeting, we'll be doing, having a special Purple Heart Ceremony, so we wanted to just remind everyone in the community that we'll be recognizing all the recipients of Purple Hearts that Mike Johns is working to identify. And so hope that as many people as possible will turn out for that recognition. Okay. Anybody have any other updates you want to add? So it being 7:05, Chief O'Leary and Linda Walsh, would you like to come forward? This is the National Night Out Against Crime.
And drugs.
And drugs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank the Board for allowing us to intrude on your time tonight. The community, thanks to the efforts of the J.C.'s, will be presenting on August 5th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, our Community Night Out Against Crime and Drugs. We've made contact with the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department. They're going to be bringing their command vehicle down as something that families could have a look at in terms of some type of critical incident. We could use that van to support the activities of our officers as well as any partners that we would have. I know that HUGS Foxborough and the Foxborough Senior Citizen and Human Services Group, both will be there as well as, I believe, New Hope will have a contingent as well in terms of the domestic violence prevention. And I'll let Linda describe some of the efforts she's had in putting this event together.
So Paul Feeny will be the disc jockey for the evening. Ron Young at the Lafayette House was gracious enough to donate some ice cream to give away. We have an animal affair coming, which is a small petting zoo. The Chief is going to supply the bounce house for the evening. And at the end of the evening, we have a Safety Glow Parade with all the children, as well as Pat Patriot will be there. This year, the Junior and Patriot Cheerleaders will be there. We also have a karate demonstration by Field Marshals, Martial Arts Academy, and he's going to sort of do like a stranger danger type thing for the kids. We also have, Chief's Department will be there giving out DNA kits for parents to take home for the children. Brigham and Women's is going to have a table there. They're going to actually supply the hand sanitizers that we need because we have the petty zoo, so. The YR Committee, the Foxborough Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, will have a pamphlet there on tables available for folks. And Norfolk Child Advocacy Center will have some literature also.
Sounds great. What time does it start?
It starts at 6:00.
6:00 PM.
You said August 5th, but what day of the week is that?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Is that at the Common?
Yes, it's right on the Common. Looking back in my journal, the J.C.'s have been partnering with the Police Department in this event going back as far as 1992. So throughout all that time, I think we only missed one night due to a lot of circumstances, but it's been consistent thanks to the efforts of volunteers that we have in the community.
Sounds like a great program, really. Thank you very much.
Well, we're hoping to have a lot of families. If we have some good weather like tonight, we should have quite a crowd there.
Great.
Are you giving away those little plastic badges or the tattoos again?
The tattoos are a big hit.
Yeah.
You know, at least thankfully, they wash off. But no, we'll have some other giveaways besides the DNA kit for parents as well.
Fantastic. It's a great program, and I mean, anytime you can do something for 22 years, but this, hopefully, there's a lot of people and it's good weather.
And naturally, they're celebrating the 31st year, so we've been pretty consistent. And I think that we're the only town around that, you know, in this general area that celebrates it, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Best of luck.
I think that you folks will be meeting that night, but...
Do we have a meeting on the 5th?
Yes.
We have to meet like at the bouncy place.
Well, it might even be a police car.
Yeah, so it's a field trip.
Field trip.
Yeah. The Patty Wagon will be there, right, too?
Great.
Maybe.
Great, so, any questions?
Any questions?
Any?
Right. If you do have time before the meeting starts, please feel free to join us.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And I just wanted to remind you folks that the J.C.'s, they have their concert on the Common this Thursday, and this Thursday will be Splitsville and Howl at the Moon. So anybody who hasn't had a chance to see the entertainment live, come on up to the Common on Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 for your concert. And also while I have the chair and the Muse Paint Bar, the Paint Bar that's coming up this evening, just wanted you guys to know that I'm actually going to one tonight at Waxies, so I'm very excited if we're going to have one right at Patriot Place that we can go anytime, so that's my two cents about that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There any other citizens who'd like to come forward? Larry?
Thank you. My name's Larry Thomas, 6 Norton Street. My comments are about the agenda item later on in the meeting, the non-binding referendum. Would you like me to wait until then or give them now? It's up to you. That's fine.
I'd like to wait. What do you think?
Yeah, it might be more appropriate if we're talking about the topic.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Can you hang in there?
I can.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so it being approximately 7:10, Foxborough Country Club, Kerry Pereira, regarding change of manager.
Just for the record, I'm a member of the Foxborough Country Club, so I'm going to have to recuse myself from this discussion.
Good evening.
Hi.
Can you just identify yourself for the minute?
My name is Kerry Pereira.
And my name's Howard Kobe.
Hi, Howard. Okay, so you're here to just request a change of management?
Yes.
Does the Board have any questions on the application?
I bet they would have looked complete and had no questions on it.
It shows that you've worked at a number of places. Have you been a manager at those places?
Yes, I was a manager in Providence for four years.
Oh, okay. And did you have the TIPS qualification?
Yeah. I have a copy of it if you guys want that.
Okay. No, as long as you've done it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, David?
No.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion, please. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the change of manager application for the Foxborough Country Club.
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
4-0-1. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, John.
All right. Couple minutes early for the 7:20. Do you want to take one action item? First one? I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the public event application of max performance for triathlon event bike race for August 10, 2014. Can I have a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor? Next one? Keep going, Jenny. Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a $50 donation from Roberta McIntyre to the Council on Aging in memory of V. Barr.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One sec? Yep. Want to do another? I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Kristen Havi to the Foxborough Historical Commission for the term expiring May 1, 2017, and thank her for her willingness to serve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going. Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen post the warrant for the state primary election on Tuesday, the 9th day of September, 2014, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the following purpose, to cast their votes from the state primary for candidates of political parties for the following offices: Senator, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Receiver General, Auditar, Representative, Congress Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, District Attorney, Registered Probate, County Commissioners, and County Treasurers.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. Keep going, Jenny. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for one-day, all-alcohol liquor licenses for the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation at the Dana Faber Fieldhouse on August 15 and 22, September 21, October 5, 16 and 26, November 2 and 23, December 14 and 28.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Cyril Paul Dumas to the Norfolk County Advisory Board and thank him for his willingness to continue to serve Foxborough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to hold? Okay, we'll hold now. All right, okay. So the next item is a public hearing for Muse Paint Bar LLC for a wine and malt new license application. Good evening. And this is, would you like to read the legal notice? The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 22, 2014, at 7:20 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on application for a new annual beer and wine beverages restaurant license to Muse Paint Bar LLC, DBA Muse Paint Bar, manager Stanley Finch, with the location at 217 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Premises is 2,659 square feet space with 94 seats for classes and dining. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. To my left, I have Stanley Finch, the proposed manager. I have the notices and the affidavit.
You're welcome.
As the notice indicated, we're here this evening for a beer and wine alcohol license, annual license for a new concept or rather exciting concept to be located at Patriot Place called Muse Paint Bar. I'll let Stanley give a brief overview of it, and we have some sample menus and sample renderings and pictures from other locations, and then we'll entertain any questions you may have. Stanley?
Sure. So if you don't mind, can I approach with some of these photos? Okay. I think they might be helpful to demonstrate a little bit about what I'm talking about here. So I have a few menus. I'll get into a good operation in a second. There's three of those.
Thank you.
And then these are the same sets of photos right here. But what Muse is, Muse is a painting instruction studio. We also sell wine and light bear. We have four studios that are currently operating. Those four studios are in Manchester, New Hampshire, West Hartford, Connecticut, Providence, Rhode Island, Portland, Maine. We have sessions that typically last anywhere from two to two and a half hours. They are at predefined times, mostly nights and weekends, although not very late night. Our sessions, the night sessions typically start around 6:30 or 7:00. Like I said, they go to two to two and a half hours. Those are public sessions. Anybody can sign up for them. You can have a group of one person painting. You can have 50 people painting. You can also do private parties. We have two private studios, and I'll go over the layout, but you can do private parties if you have 12 people or more. And so those are typically birthday parties. We do kids' parties, things like that. We also plan to do some sort of walk-in hours, although that's not, it's a much smaller part of our business, but those would work more as you can kind of walk in anytime. There are artists on hand that go over, that sort of teach more custom painting to you, and you can do any of our 400 paintings that we have. The menu is there in front of you, or in front of some of you, and it has sort of small bites, top of style, and some entrees. We try to keep things where people can largely eat them with their hands, although there are a couple items on there that require forks and things like that. I think that's about it. Any questions on the basic operations model, and then I can go over a couple of these exhibits as to where we are and what our floor plan looks like?
I would just like to add, I think it's important to note for the Board's consideration that a vast majority of your customers make prearranged visits, so there's a tremendous amount of control in terms of, we know what's coming, we know how long they're going to be there, and so there's a lot of control from that standpoint. It's not a typical walk-in place where people come out of the street.
Ninety-five percent of people sign up online. You can also call in. There are some walk-ins, but it's difficult to accommodate them if we've sold out the class, although we'll certainly try. We have our capacity set at less than our sort of fire occupancy load so that we can add a couple more if we sort of need to. But that's right. So we can, we largely know who's going to be there, and we can staff to how many people are going to be there.
What's your capacity again?
It, we have it laid out for roughly 80, I believe. And, you know, we always like to get in there, play around with things a little bit, and just see what's comfortable, and we're not trying to jam people in there.
The application indicates approximately 94 seats.
94. Thanks.
Stanley, what other towns and cities did you say Muse Paint Bar?
Sure. It's in Manchester, New Hampshire, Portland, Maine, Connecticut, West Hartford, Connecticut, and Providence, Rhode Island.
So this is kind of right in the middle?
Right in the middle. And so closest to Providence, which is helpful for us because we can have artists that might go back and forth, and we'll certainly hire local artists here, but helpful for us in that way.
And the general intent is to locate in a high excitement area because it's an attraction that enhances the balance of the surrounding sites. So would you like to show them the floor plan?
Sure. I'll go over some of this. So this first exhibit is where we are within Patriot Place. And so this is the north end over here. So you have the stadium up here, the new Splitsville right across from us, bar, Louis, and some of this over here. Anybody like me to pass it up there? Or you guys kind of have to just...
Great location.
And then this is just a rendering that we've been working with Patriot Place on that shows what we, what the front is going to look like. And so it just has our standard logo there. This will be sort of painted around here with a couple, sort of part of our slogan and our kind of blade sign right there.
So you have different groups rotating through, like about how long does each session last?
It's two, two and a half hours. Sometimes private parties will want to do something longer, you know, a corporate group will want to have some sort of a meeting before, after, you know, a kid's birthday party, they'll want to open presents and do cake and some things like that. But the standard public session is usually two hours, 15 minutes, sometimes two and a half. And then this is our floor plan. This is a little bit more detailed, and let me know if you can't see this okay. I should turn around. But this is the front entrance right there, so what you just saw, that's where you'll walk in. This is the main studio. This is the stage from which the instructor will teach. There are a couple private studios there that are on your right side when you walk in. This is a garage door that can be opened if we want to combine and accommodate a larger private group. The bar, it's more of just sort of center of everything, so you can order drinks, you can order food, you can sign up for a session. We have brochures, gift certificates, everything that we sell there. It is not a bar where people sit. We don't even have stools there. It's just a place where you can order. You can also order from sitting down. We have artists that are walking around, taking drink orders, helping people with their painting, that type of thing. The kitchen area is back here with freezer, refrigerator, another freezer there, a couple of ovens that sit on top of the freezer, they're smaller ovens. Everything, I should mention that we, all of our food items are sort of heat and serve, so it's not a very complicated food process. And then the sort of boring part back here, we have the bathrooms and a couple of storage areas, rear means of egress out the back here.
Clearly, all the service will be TIPS certified and so...
So Stanley, could I walk in there and sit with some friends and order drinks without participating in the painting?
We sometime, I mean, you technically could. We would have to be open, and we would have to have seats there. And that's something, we've actually had the discussions with other cities and towns as to whether or not we should do that. We're honestly happy going one way or the other. It's not imperative to our business that we do that. But we have let people come in before that are interested, and they just think it's a fun concept. They'll get one drink, kind of watch for a little while, and then they'll sort of take off. But there has to be, there has to be seats for them to be able to do that.
Stanley, what are your hours of operation and the number of days per week?
Sure. So we would like to get up. Does anybody still need this? We, like I said, we're mostly nights and weekends. We have, we plan to be open every night, starting at session 6:30 or 7:00. We would go until, the actual session would go until sort of 9:30, somewhere around there. We sometimes have customers milling around, they're finishing their painting, taking pictures, things like that. And, but we'd be closed every night by 11-ish. Well, we'd be closed, weeknights probably around 10:00, weekends around 11:00. Just like I said, it depends on how long customers mill around. Weekends, Saturday, Sunday, will be open a lot more frequently, so, you know, sort of from noon, the sessions, it'll start at noon. A lot of private parties, especially kids' parties, will want to go earlier in the day, Saturday, Sunday. And so, like I said, 10:30, 11:00 at night. So it's, I mean, and we will have, you know, if a private party wants to come in at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, we can certainly do it. But those just won't, those will be sort of non-standard operating hours.
Now, will you be open during events at the stadium?
We were talking about that today. We will certainly be there, and we'll be doing something. We need to work out exactly how we're going to do classes while there's football games going on and things like that. But we certainly do plan to either be sort of advertising our business, have a little booth out front, that type of thing, and we will likely have a class at some point. We just need to work out exactly how that works.
Do you reach out to local high schools for aspiring artists to come in and maybe run a class or...
Yeah, we reach out more at the sort of college age or sort of post-college. I would say the majority of our instructors are 20s and 30s. And so we have high school students that come in to paint, but typically not, not working for us. Most of our instructors have BFAs or some sort of art degree like that, and they've been doing it for a long time, you know, 15-plus years.
Okay. Jenny? You spoke about having like potties for children. Would they be kind of segregated in the smaller of the rooms?
They certainly could be. It depends on what time they come in and if we have a public session going on. So if we don't have a public session going on, they can take that larger studio. If we do, then they would probably go into one of those smaller studios. But we always let people go into the sort of larger room first. If there's something else going on, then we, it depends on the sizes of different groups. If it's a small, most kids' parties are 10 to 20 kids, and so we'll put them in one of the smaller studios, and we might have a larger fundraiser or something like that that's going on in the main studio.
I think it's interesting because what essentially is happening is you book your space. So they'll know in advance what's coming in, so they will, they'll set up the space based upon the clientele. So if someone were to call and make an arrangement, I gather, for a birthday party, then that, then you have an open studio going on, then you arrange a space accordingly.
That's right.
Any other questions?
So I assume at this stage, your presentation's made it this far, the building inspectors looked at, the plans, the police chiefs have gone over that. Any outstanding items at this point?
We have, so that we have been in communication with the building department. There, we are finalizing our MEP drawings right now.
Okay.
We did not have those as part of our initial, what we're going to give them, and so we're working to finalize those, and we'll have those done within the next week or so. But that's the only outstanding item as far as all that goes.
I think that was the police...
I think so. And we did meet with the police chief today.
Okay. And as far as the building footprint, with the building, I guess what I'm getting at is the occupancy, it's not going to go up or down. What's in front of us is what we're voting on and...
It's the lease space, yes, to my space.
Very good. Thank you.
And with Chief O'Leary's here, you've, Chief, do you feel comfortable in regard to like my question about segregating the children and...
I believe that, listening to the business plan earlier today, that they have the capacity to do that so that you could have multiple events going on, you know, certainly two of them in a smaller venue, and having a larger group congregating in the larger studio. In my discussions, not only is the applicant a partner in the business enterprise, but he's going to be the person managing for us, and I was more impressed by the fact that he has the management experience from running their Manchester, New Hampshire operation. So he's already learned some of the tricks of the trade in the business, being TIPS certified so that I think we will escape some of the hurdles new facilities have starting out.
Can I ask another question? Mr. Finch, is this a concept that you developed?
I wish I could take credit for it. No, it, it started out as more popular in the south and southwest. We don't think for any cultural reason. That's just where a couple of the big businesses were that started out there. I used to live in Dallas, and there were about seven of them in the sort of broader area down there. I went to a couple of them. I really liked them. It fit in well with my background, and so we opened some of the first ones in this, in this area, in this region, but I can't take credit for starting the whole concept.
It's kind of an unusual concept. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think it sounds great. Maybe just come up with some, you know, impressionist version of footballs for game days, you know?
Yeah, certainly.
Have that as your picture.
You know, may I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Can you paint?
I can, but not very well. Not as well as the people that are instructing.
I never asked a question of them.
I could fill in a pinch, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't want me teaching the class.
All right, well, we all set? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Any questions from the audience, comments?
I'm Jack Gannon. I manage the Art Studio Gallery at Patriot Place. And I'm also the Vice President of the Foxborough Art Association. And I just want to support these guys and what they're doing because the more art we can bring into the community, the better off we are. And I know just from the three years we're doing this with the Art Studio and Gallery, that there's a lot of people in this town and in the area who are asking for things like this. And it's just a fantastic thing for the, for the community, for the artists, everyone, everyone involved. And I just know it's, you know, the more art we can have in the town, the better it is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion to close the public session, public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? A motion to approve?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for an annual beer and wine restaurant license for Muse Paint Bar located at 217 Patriot Place.
May I second?
Any discussion?
Just under discussion, I say, I do like the concept and I appreciate the very precise presentation. And I look forward to this type of, I don't want to say establishment, but business coming in. I think it's forward-thinking and it's exciting, I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
So it being seven thirty-five, we'll have a public hearing for the Bass Pro Shop change of officers, directors.
The Board, is the legal notice, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2014, at 7:35 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application for change of offices slash directors and change in LLC members of the annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license for Bass Pro Outdoor World LLC, DBA Bluefin Lounge, manager James P. Camerata, with a location at One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
How are you?
Good thanks. Can we have your name for the record, please?
James Camerata.
So this is a standard change application for officers or directors who are changing, right? Does anyone have any questions about?
Yeah, this is nothing to do with the site manager or the operation itself, this is just a legal change. Right, that's what, that's what I understand. Yeah.
So, so nothing changes other than the corporate paperwork?
If we don't have any questions, can I have a motion to close the public, actually, sorry. Anyone in the audience have any questions? No, okay.
I move that we close a public hearing in regard to the change in office and directors for Bass Pro Outdoor World LLC, DBA Bluefin Lounge.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi, thank you very much.
Do you want the motion?
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for change of offices, directors and change in LLC members of the annual all-alcoholic beverages license, restaurant license for Bass Pro Outdoor World LLC, DBA Bluefin Lounge, manager James P. Camerata, with a location at One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you.
No, you're all set, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. So why don't we go back to the action items because we still have a little more time before our seven fifty?
I just wanted to point out that we did actually evaluate the substation location today. And the votes seemed acceptable from an operational perspective and it actually should be operational right now. The chief has evaluated all the things he needs, everything is there. So early his staff, the job is just meeting all the demands that the chief has requested. And so it is operational effectively.
Great.
So operation, the bricks and mortar, but all the electronics and the people and everything's ready to go.
It was actually not a lot of bricks and mortar, the space was actually already there. It was just not, needed to be retrofitted for the purposes of what we needed it for.
Along with just moving some furniture around, doing some cleaning.
Can you come to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Other than some cleaning, if we take a look at 2006, when the design was going on of Patriot Place, it was, part of that was to actually have a facility on the property that we could use as a police substation. For a variety of reasons, we weren't able to pull it off at that particular time. But now, as the site has transitioned and become more vibrant as part of a hospitality zone, I feel that it would be adequate for us to use in some cases, in situations where we needed to find places to hold some people, gather additional information, talk to victims without having to do it in more public areas. We now have access to the garage itself through the garage doors with our own remote. And we can have better contact with stadium security to get information from them when they observe from their people things happening on the general area. So it's a step in the right direction and certainly that Mr. Early has put himself out to make sure that it has met my needs. We actually had put in fiber optic lines that lead directly to the station. We have a notebook computer right there now and we'll be changing our own equipment and perhaps use some other device, more desktop at some time in the future. But officers can do their reports there if they wish to do so, if it's a significant incident. So we're on track.
Very good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and could you explain that this was part of the negotiations that was done with the splitsfield local license transition?
It was actually, I think it was finalized with our process, but it had actually been raised earlier and then through the, through the, sort of the, the evolution of what's going on at Patriot Place and the increasing crowd and use of that facility. Now was, now was really actually a really good time to actually have that space available. And it was actually, you know, actually believed to be a joint understanding that they would like to have that police, really policing effect at the stadium, at the stadium, at Patriot Place location. And as a result, to correct that point now, with it now is really not there. Now they have to have the person, the funding is in place to hire the person, so we're moving on to that next time as well.
If I could just add one issue. Although we have the facility in place, both myself and Mr. Early understand that Patriot Place is continuing to evolve. And what is there now might change in the future. And I've got a commitment from Mr. Early that our needs might evolve and there's certainly a willingness and partnership to make additional changes as times change. So I think that's important to understand, you know, their commitment in providing a safe environment, you know, for both the people that come to Patriot Place as well as our community in general.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Mr. Early for allowing me to go up here today, to view the site, to make sure I can report back to the board tonight because I know this is a concern to you collectively, so we're now in a position now where we can move forward to the next issue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Shall we do the Fair Housing Committee reappointments? And on the action item list? Michael Reagan. It's Michael Reagan, Mary Souza, Richard Hods.
I have Joan Souza, Joan Sosio, is it?
No.
Oh, wait a minute.
Before that, before that.
I don't have that. Yeah, well, just do. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Michael Reagan to the Fair Housing Committee for a term expiring, I don't have it, is it May?
Five, one, two thousand fifteen.
May first, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Same expiration date for the others?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Mary Souza to the Fair Housing Committee for the appointment expiring May first, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Richard Hods to the Fair Housing Committee for a term expiring May first, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Do you want to go to the May PAC appointment letters, number nine? These are out of order? I have them here, Jane.
I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Sharon Watson as the representative to the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Area Planning Council for the term expiring May first, two thousand seventeen. Is it seventeen?
Correct. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
We also can appoint an alternate. And so I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint William Keegan as the alternate representative on the Massachusetts Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a term expiring May first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that as well.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, can I just bring up something? I know when a former town manager was here, he was on a, so many committees, I lost track, there was a whole bunch of them. And I'm sure some of them were three years. Could we look to see what committees that he still may be on? Because I think you're as the alternate coming on to this, who was on it before? Are you replacing a former town manager who was still in the mix up until today? Had to be about a dozen that he was on.
Yeah, well, there were a bunch that we talked about earlier.
Yep.
It's my first ride here, there were a bunch of appointments that were put on, but I think a lot of them I was wanting to alternate.
Alternates, yeah.
And not actual.
Well, procedurally, we have to terminate the appointment?
I think, I'd feel more comfortable if we took the approach to terminate it regardless, I don't want to leave anything.
Yeah, if there's any stray dogs out there, we probably should button that up.
All right. It being seven fifty, why don't we, Jenny, could you read the public hearing notice for ninety-nine restaurants?
The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2014, at 7:50 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application for change of offices slash director and/or managing member of the annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for ninety-nine restaurants of Boston LLC, doing business as Ninety-Nine Restaurant and Pub, manager Ronald Lima, with a location at Fourth Fisher Street, Foxborough, Mass.
Thank you. Ronald, would you like to come forward?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Can I just provide your name for?
My name is Ronald Lima.
Thank you.
This is probably the easiest one we've ever had to deal with. This is simply just an officer and director leaving the company.
Correct.
There's no new officer coming in, there's no new director coming in. It's just to alert us that there's been a change in the management structure.
Right.
There's nothing more to it than that.
Correct.
Okay.
So how are the renovations going?
Unbelievable.
Are they?
Yeah.
Outstanding, it looks fantastic. Yep.
And Thursday night, you're opening?
Thursday night, we're opening, yeah. Yep. Hope to see some of you there for the ribbon cutting. Five o'clock. What's that? Oh, we'll be open, yeah.
They're ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
Oh, very good.
Nice.
Any other?
Looks fantastic.
Any other questions? So I move that we close the hearing?
I'll second that.
Public input?
Oh, I'm sorry, public input, any questions? Nope.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for change of officer slash director and/or managing member of the annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for ninety-nine restaurants.
I'm sorry, Jane, we didn't close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, do we have a second on the motion?
Yes, second is.
Okay, so John seconded that. All those in favor? Thanks, Jane.
Okay, now I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for change of officer, director and/or managing member of the annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for ninety-nine restaurants LLC, DBA Ninety-Nine Restaurant Pub, manager Ronald Lima, with a location at Fourth Fisher Street in Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, we'll see you Thursday.
Have a great day.
Thanks. All right. We still have about almost ten minutes, want to go back to the action items and try and finish those up?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Sarah Paul Duma to the Norfolk County Advisory Board and thank him for his willingness to continue to serve Foxborough.
Gina, I think we already did that.
You did that one? What's the next one? Okay, the next one is the Council on Aging, number eleven.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept a $100 donation to the Council on Aging from Catherine Howard on behalf of Sarah Howard. And I'd like to read the letter that accompanies this. This is the letter that accompanied the donation to the Council on Aging. Dear Director of Foxborough Senior Center, my name is Sarah Howard. I was invited to a friend's birthday party. Instead of presents, she wanted me to do, to donate to a charity of my choice. I picked the Foxborough Senior Center. Please accept this donation on behalf of my friend Samantha Conley, your friend Sarah Howard.
Very nice. So I'll make a motion to accept the $100 donation gift to the Foxborough Senior Center on behalf of Sarah Howard and Samantha Conley.
And I'll second that with gratitude and it's a wonderful letter if the town wants to see it, very personal.
All those in favor? Thank you. Number twelve, Joan Sosio.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the reappointment of Joan Sosio to the Canoe River Aquafer Advisory Committee for term ending July first, two thousand seventeen, and thank her for her continued willingness to serve Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Sandra Bergeron.
I move to prove, to approve the Hackney license application for the two-year Hackney license expiring on July 22nd, 2016, for Sandra Bergeron, working for East Coast Limo in Foxborough.
So if it's expiring and this is new, isn't it a renewal?
It says new, it's checked off, it's checked off as new.
Do you know this person, chief?
I did a background check for the selectman's office. I did not notice on the phone itself whether it was marked as a new or a renewal.
So the cab company they're working for is East Coast Limo, so that's existing, so we have historically approved.
This is just the new driver?
Correct.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
I move to approve the appointment of Roberta Ray Jones to the Board of Registrazes for the term expiring May one, two thousand sixteen, and thank her for willingness to serve Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Keep going.
Keep going.
Yep.
I move to reappoint Gary Whitehouse to the Audit Committee for the term expiring on July first, two thousand seventeen, and thank him for his continued service to Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going, one more?
Okay.
Or a couple more.
I move to approve the request for Toby Keith's Byron Grill for eleven A.M. liquor service on September twenty-one, October twenty-sixth, November twenty-third, and December fourteenth and twenty-eighth, per conditions noted in the notice.
So this is to permit them to open at eleven A.M. on game days?
Patriot Home Games.
That begin at one o'clock?
That begin at one o'clock, yeah.
Was that, was that in the motion?
I think what we've done in the past, because they all come in a little differently, we just make a motion to approve for Patriot Home Games. That way if they changed, as long as it's not before eleven, but if they.
Yeah.
Get canceled, removed, without approving the specific dates.
If the game starts at four in the afternoon, they can still open at eleven?
Uh, no, that's, that's not what we.
Right, it has to be a one o'clock start.
Yeah, yep. So I think the motion was for all home games starting at one, allowing them to open at eleven.
Okay.
And forego all the dates.
So change the motion to that?
I'll second that.
Did you get that, Ed?
Got that, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that, I move the board of selectmen approve the reappointment of Stephen Kane as constable for the term ending July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Chief, how many constables do we have?
It appears to be endless.
I thought it was, the answer I was looking for, yeah.
Ms. Herman from the selectman's office brought that issue up today, and we had a brief discussion. If you took a look at the bylaw, there were actually, going back to the eighteen hundreds, there were only two constables, according to our bylaw, that the town would have, and that goes back to the fact that they were really the enforcers of law prior to paid policing in the community in the eighteen sixties. I would think that it might be prudent for the board to redraft that and set a limit on what you think is appropriate for the community. I know a lot of people that have businesses in other towns as constables, you know, probably want the availability of continuing to market their services here in Foxborough as well. But that, you know, should be a policy decision by the board to come up with a number, but at the same time, we might want to rewrite that portion of the bylaw about that.
Chief, what, because what I did is I just went on the website and Googled them, and I was getting an office in East Haunting. It's a reappointment, but what's the harm of having too many? It doesn't cost the town any, we don't pay them.
No, it doesn't, and so long as, you know, through due diligence in the selectman's office, they make sure that they're properly bonded. It's just the fact that they have to be appointed on a yearly basis.
Go ahead, Ginny. Didn't we have this discussion last year, and didn't we say that we wouldn't have any new constables, but we would reappoint, but we wouldn't allow any new constables? I thought that was what we had.
I thought it was taxi drivers.
Well, that too, no, no, that, no.
No, I'm glad you answered the question that it's endless, but, I mean, do we have twenty, thirty, fifty constables that are operating in Foxborough?
Don't, no.
Okay.
Ordinarily, again, the selectman's office, if it's a new applicant, they've asked me to handle a background investigation and gather some data, but if it's a reappointment, that might not take place.
I think we did decide to have a moratorium on new applicants.
Good, yeah.
I don't think we should take Chief O'Leary's suggestion and actually do it officially, write up something.
Bill, maybe we can have in our information pack for the next meeting what the bylaw is and take a look at the language, that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Just, there is a moratorium on not the constables.
Okay. So I had a, there was a second on that motion?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so, being eight o'clock, we now have a public hearing to review an proposed increase in parking violation fines.
I'll read the legal notice.
Yeah.
Legal notice, the board of selectmen pursuant to their authority under Mass General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-eight and one-half, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, at eight P.M. to discuss increasing the parking fine schedule for parking violations in Foxborough. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This has been brought about by the fact that we had to reorder, or plan to reorder, our parking ticket books for staff members, and at that time, figuring it had been some time since we took a look at the different prices or fine levels that we had, Lieutenant Haskell of the Police Department Administrative Division did a study, taking a look at what surrounding towns were doing for fines, also being cognizant of our committee within the town, talking about the disabled wanting to perhaps participate in money going to their endeavors to make things better for people with disabilities that need parking spaces. So as a result, we took a look at the fine schedule, which was originally set back in two thousand five, by the way, so we haven't had any significant change in it for a number of years, and as a result of the research you did in different communities, you see the different costs of illegal and illicit parking in front of you, that match somewhat what other communities of a similar size and nature would have.
Do you have any questions?
And I'm hoping to hear, you know, back from the board, so that it would allow us, you know, if you make the determination, so that we could order the new ticket books sooner rather than later.
So you ordered new ticket books how many years ago?
Well, we ordered them within the last two years, but now that we're running low, it was a suggestion that perhaps we would want to amend the particular fines on each one. I mean, we had tickets, as you see, for two dollars or five dollars, and I don't really feel that many of those are really a deterrent to illicit parking.
Chief, as far as handicap parking, can you give a ticket to someone who parks in a retail establishment's handicap parking spaces?
Yes.
On a private lot, you can do that?
That's correct.
Okay.
In fact, if somebody misuses a placard, for example, on event days, my staff screens people entering that have handicap placards that are trying to get parking closer to the stadium. If the person whose photo is on that placard is not in that vehicle, which people sometimes do, bother, borrow their grandmother's car, and four healthy adult males are there, then we actually take the placard and we issue a traffic citation, which is allowed for the misuse of the placard. And I know that we get a lot of support, both from our registry of motor vehicles, as well as out-of-state registries, in suspending the person's ability to keep that placard. And it's because of that action, we now have very few people trying to abuse that privilege.
Ginny, did you have any questions? No? David?
And this brings us consistent with surrounding communities?
With other communities, that he went online to see what they were charging for fines. And I felt that, given the nature, the officers, you know, will sometimes issue warnings as opposed to fines, depending on how outrageous the parking situation is or the violation.
I actually, I think this is a good thing.
I just had a question. Do we have standard listing of towns that we use to make comparisons? Because, you know, when on, for all issues, the same, do we use the same towns for all issues?
Not always. Not always. In this particular thing, he was looking for those communities that had the parking fines up on their webpages. You know, as part of a method to do it. Sometimes it's very difficult to get feedback when we're doing it, you know, town by town, just asking people for additional information, but he felt it was prudent, you know, to have a basis for making the changes that you see before you.
Parking fines, we traditionally are pretty consistent from place to place unless you have really looked at them a lot, but there's, there are, the other one exception to this, of course, is we have a stadium, you know, that's a different scenario as well, but but generally speaking, they should be pretty close to one.
Yeah, I actually went online to try to figure out the comparison. Like, if you go to the Boston, it's prominently on there, you can find it, and they tell you basically how you get them, and there's some websites on how you get out of them, but Boston is much more overall higher than what we're seeing here.
Right.
I couldn't find many on the town websites. You look in Mansfield, I looked in the zoning bylaw, I looked at the police website, and that's a town that I was kind of looking at because they had the stadium. Some towns have tickets that we don't have, like parking in an emergency snowstorm. Some towns have a fine, we don't, but it may be covered under, there's a general coverall one here someplace.
It's distracting slower traffic or something.
Yeah, so it's, it was just hard to find any consistency from town to town.
Right, two in particular that fall closer to our description on the internet were the town of Hull and also Randolph, although Randolph is, you know, bigger than Foxborough, Hull a little smaller. You know, those are towns that, you know, we took a harder look because it would more match the types of violations we would have. You know, fluctuating populations in Hull due to the summer season, which sort of matches our summer season, stadium season. And then you'd have situations similar with Randolph, just day-to-day traffic in the downtown area.
Chief, I mean, I'm sure you don't issue a tremendous amount of parking tickets in Foxborough, but roughly, how many do you think you issue?
Probably three to four hundred in a year.
Okay. It's more than I thought.
Interesting, if you look at the Mansfield website, their, their budget, what they brought in last year was about forty-eight thousand dollars in tickets that they.
Is that traffic tickets, or was that in parking tickets?
It could be traffic, you just said citations, it could be traffic, yeah.
Any other questions? I think it looks very reasonable, Ed. I looked at it before. Thank you.
Well, I think Alan Haskell did a nice job in preparing this for us, knowing that, you know, it's time to reorder, and it would be a good time to implement the new fine schedule.
Any comments from the public? I have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
We have a motion to approve.
I move that the board of selectmen approve the revised schedule for parking violations in the town of Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Chief.
The next item is the Town Committee Handbook Approval. We have a copy of the handbook with a letter from Ginny. Ginny, do you want to speak to the changes that you're suggesting?
I brought this up last week, suggesting that we add that, that boards and committees put their agendas and their approved minutes on the town website, and because this is a policy of the town, and the board is the electmen, the policymakers of the town, the board would have to formally approve it in order for the changes to be implemented and included in the handbook.
So right now, all agendas go through the town clerk office, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you come up, thanks?
Hi. Yeah, in order to be filed on the town calendar, they need to be filed with my office. They get posted, date stamped, and then scanned and put on the calendar. So we maintain the agendas, we're required to keep them for a period of time by state law, but as far as the minutes, some minutes are filed with my office, some are filed with, like, your minutes stay in the selectman's office, so it, it's kind of a variety of ways it's done.
How do they make it their way onto the website when they're filed?
Like, for instance, planning puts their own on, Board of Health puts their own on, selectman's office, Sanders puts those on, AdCom, Randy puts them on if he's supplied with them, so there's no procedure in place for that, and different people have different access to different parts of the website, so Randy has access to certain things, I have access to certain things, and so it's, it's not uniform.
So for us to have a process to get committees that currently don't turn in minutes on a regular basis, what would be the best way to follow that?
We'd have to have an all of the above category.
Right.
Because there really isn't a, we don't have a website for, a website for every single committee.
No, for instance, I saw Linda Walsh yesterday, and she had asked about it, and they're not on the website yet, they don't have a page, and they wouldn't necessarily be, they probably would fall under your board.
We've asked, we're in the process of asking our website company, our website designer, to see if they can actually help us with that piece of it. So if we can, because there were a lot of, you would create a special website for a lot of these committees.
Right.
More or less, you know, a lot of them are one-topic issues, and we move on from there, but there were some forty committees.
Right, we went back and looked, and, you know, so a lot of them aren't active and haven't been for a while, so we wouldn't necessarily put them on, but I think I have minutes in the draws for over forty committees, and there's a lot that I don't have control of, so.
It might be good if we take, take some time to really identify what those committees that we'd like to see on the website.
Yeah, maybe prioritize those.
That would help us a little bit, if we could, you know.
Well, what's the, what's the law regarding electronic records versus paper records?
Yeah, we're not, we're not allowed to maintain just electronic records at this point.
No, it'd apply to meeting minutes?
Everything. You know, anything that we have to keep permanent, we have to keep a hard copy of. Eventually, I think, you know, it's slowly getting there, but it's still going to be some time before that happens, and that's through the Secretary of State's office and the legislature. They, they set the laws, and the current Secretary of State hasn't shown an affinity to moving in that direction.
Our IT director, new IT director, talked about this at the department meeting last week, indicating that he's looking at ways in which we can actually start cataloging certain documents, but knowing full well that there's only, we have to at least maintain one hard copy of it, but the fact that we don't need to have thirty-five copies of
Right.
Which is, which is more often the case, because what happens is that when, when circulated a document, it goes to the various committees for obvious reasons, but we can actually circulate more electronic versions, but not necessarily on the hard copies. So we're working towards those, those process improvements.
And I think, you know, one of the biggest problems that we have is space limitations in the existing town hall, storage areas, and we've talked about in the meetings, maybe having a central archives in a new building. That would certainly make it easier, a lot of towns, Burlington's a perfect example, they have a huge archives room, they have a person who is the designated archivist, works directly with all the departments, helps them maintain the retention schedules, get rid of records when they can, so that would be the plan, you know, when we got a new building to have that, and that starts with records that have to be maintained on a permanent basis, you'd have an area for those, and then you'd have an area for records that turn over.
And that could be a contracted service, we don't necessarily have to have it as a person.
You know, different towns do it in different ways.
I mean, the reason I was interested in this is because it's nice to, I mean, everyone is used to using their computer, and it's, it's nice to be able to click on the webpage to find out what's on the agenda for some meeting or something, or what happened, reading the, the meeting minutes. I mean, we're all used to clicking, reading, so that's why I, I thought it was, would be good to introduce putting the agendas and the minutes on the website.
I don't think anybody takes a role with the, with the, with the issue itself, it's the, the execution of it, it's a little bit more troublesome, troubling for us in how we can actually do that. So the question is how we prioritize that. So the question is how we prioritize that, and if we can prioritize it to the point where we can, um, make it work, I think that'd be a little bit better.
It hasn't been the, the, the situation where, and we have so many different committees, that someone comes from a committee, the chairman says, "We want to put this on the website," and they were told, "No."
No one's asked to do that yet.
So, okay, as long, as long as that's not happening, that would be more concerning.
I think Linda would like to do that, or your committee.
Yeah, we, we actually had a committee meeting one Wednesday and we went on the website and couldn't find it.
Yeah.
And I, and I swore I thought I saw it on there at one point, but we went through it and couldn't see it.
You see the, the agendas, but not, um, any meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes, yeah.
And we have copies of them, hard copies in the fi- uh, files.
Yeah, but then that went to the discussion, all right, how does it get on there, does it go to Randy, does it go to you? Randy set up the website, but did he transition out, so I think we were just kind of in flux on not knowing.
When, when a committee is formed, is there someone in town hall that's considered to be the keeper of that committee's records?
Yeah, um, my office is the default.
The, okay.
Yeah.
So if they can't find anyone else to be the keeper of their records, it's the town clerk's office.
Right.
Right, and if he doesn't have it, that means that it, it still may exist, but it, but you'd have to go back to the, to the source and really, and really dig harder at that point.
Um, a few questions, Ginny, on, uh, page one, you wanted to, um, delete section two point three appointment?
Well, that was, that's because it was duplicated on, on page two, it was, it was in the pledge, and that was the only reason.
Oh, okay, because I looked at my copy and I couldn't find that it was duplicated.
Well, it, it had Deb, Deb had, Deb had deleted that, but then she couldn't make the other changes because the board of selectmen has to...
Oh, okay.
She deleted the duplication. But we had to vote on the policy about the agendas and the approved minutes, and that's what she's waiting for.
No, but having your changes to say, um, and post-approved minutes on the town website, and that you've got that in a number of, uh, spots, I don't think websites are going away any, anytime soon, so I think it's appropriate to put that in.
Right, yeah.
So it's all right for us to leave that in, even though we don't have a mechanism to implement it for all committees at this point, Bill? And maybe, again, if we can just prioritize maybe the top ten or fifteen most active?
Yeah, I think at one point, we probably need to identify what, that, you know, unless, unless otherwise noted, that, that at the, um, we should probably identify the committees that, you know, are required to, to post them on the website.
Well, wouldn't anything, whenever they, there's a meeting and then they, they, uh, produce approved minutes, and then they have to go to Bob, so wouldn't anything that would be required to go to Bob, that would be what could go on the, uh, website? And the, the agenda and the approved minutes?
Conceivably, I, the, the question is how do you catalog it on the, uh, on the system?
Right, if they have an, an existing department, it might be easier...
Right.
...to build off that, but if they're not a department per se...
I mean, you want, you want to have a list of forty different committees.
Well, we have, on the website, we do, we do have a list of the departments.
I do, but they're, but they're not, they're not actual departments, they're just committees, and it's just a, a spot.
Right.
So there'd have to be a subsection of each committee that says minutes and, and agendas.
Yeah, there is, already.
For each of the committees?
Well, on most of them, yeah, some of them would say error, error message.
Okay.
And it, the website has to be looked at.
Yeah.
You know?
I'll disagree with that.
But we have a new, it's funny you say, we have a new IT person who's, um, looking at things like that, right?
Working on a strategic plan right now.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot, a lot worth doing out here.
Yeah. How about if we approve, you know, we consider approving the changes to the committee handbook at this point? And then with the knowledge that, um, well, for starters, if we could provide some prioritization info back to Bill? And then also knowing that this could, you know, be pumped it over to the IT, the new IT director?
Right, once, once these changes are made, I, I like to begin, present them to the board until the board finally says approved.
Okay.
All right, and the same thing you'll see with the, uh, with the open meeting law, uh, change of the committee process. I'm, I'm, I'm going to provide you another updated version tonight, you know, you don't have to act on it tonight, you can look at it, review it, and then decide if you want to move on it again. So we'll continue to do that until the board is comfortable that we should approve it. Obviously, we don't want to build them up a lot, so you want, you want to try and get to the point where we can now act on them, but I think this is another good progress step.
So this will be continued to the meeting?
So if the board is comfortable with the changes that are here, we'll put them in, and then you can act on them again.
Yeah, I have no problem with the way it's written.
Okay.
As, as, as has been submitted with these changes.
Okay. Maybe, I think that we need maybe add some language to the extent possible we can post them, because if there's no place to post them, I mean, we need to, we need to note that.
Either that or come up with a mechanism to get them posted.
Yeah, either way. Okay. Clear enough for you? Great, thank you.
All right. So the next item is a discussion about the action to consider filing legislation to hold a special election during the state election for a non-binding referendum question concerning site selection for the town hall. This kind of ties into, you know, also the town hall working group update.
Right, I, I, um...
Can I just ask a question first? Larry, do you want to provide your input?
Sure.
Before we start this discussion?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Might as well sit down.
No, go ahead.
It's my bedtime, I'm getting a little mad at you. Thank you. Uh, Larry Thomas, Sixth Norton Street, um, I'm just speaking as a private citizen, not as a member of the advisory committee, and I'll, I'll warn you straight up that I'm a enthusiastic believer in keeping town hall in the downtown center of Foxborough. A little bit of history, I think as everybody knows here, or remembers, in two thousand and eleven, annual town meeting, three years ago, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars was appropriated for the preparation of a master plan in the town of Foxborough. Since then, there's been more money, um, appropriated for that work, to finish the work. The process for developing the master plan has been one that, I mean, in my memory of being in the town of Foxborough thirty-something years now, I can't remember a more open, inclusive, well-run process for gathering citizen input. There were numerous open houses, workshops, surveys, and if you look at the agenda of the planning board, there's, you know, there's rarely a meeting where the master plan hasn't been discussed over the last year or two. And out of that came a document which, um, has been on the website, I think the published date on the document is this past spring, if you go to the planning board, um, website. And it, there's a couple of things in the document that I just want to draw the board's attention to, and that is that, the, the first thing where the people of the town describe the type of town that they aspire to live in. And it just says that the town that Foxborough residents want, small town, walkable, where the community gathers, works, shops, worships, learns, celebrates, discusses issues of the day, and enjoys friends and neighbors. I mean, obviously, that's very aspirational, not completely achievable by any means, but I think it just shows the thoughtfulness that people put into the many, many, probably thousands of man-hours that went into this document. Further on in the document, it talks specifically about the town hall, and, and I'll quote here, it says, "Town hall needs to remain in downtown. Town hall is an integral part of downtown and the anchor of civic life." You know, I, 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 and I know a number of you, sat through many, many of these meetings, and it was really completely unambiguous that people wanted town hall to be in the s- center of town, in the downtown area. There was, there was just no ambiguity about that. Further in the document, it talks about the, the workshop series that were done, which were incredibly well-attended by town residents, and it says, "During the workshop series, town residents, including the youth, affirmed the importance of a strong downtown for Foxborough and the need to keep ta- town hall downtown." They even surveyed people, uh, um, students in the high school, and the students in the high school talked about the need to keep town hall in the downtown area. There were a number of goals that came out of the, the master plan. The number-one goal was to reinforce and strengthen downtown as the government, civic, and cultural center of Foxborough, offering a range of services and goals to serve the Foxborough community. Critical to this goal is retaining town hall in the downtown. We've been through this before, when we went through the library, there was a lot of discussion about how easy it would be to just build the library someplace else, you know, the, the building that library was not, was not easy. The library trustees and the permanent municipal building committee did a wonderful job on that building, and it, now it really is kind of the anchor to that side of, of the town common. And we have the same sort of question here, and, and I think we've already, we've asked and we've already answered the question of where town hall needs to be. There were a number of survey questions, there were two that were particularly interesting. The first question was, "Over the next ten years, what are the most critical issues facing Foxborough?" And number two, behind only the worry about a casino, this was after the casino issue was settled, but people still had it on their minds, the number-two most critical issue was downtown revitalization. So I've heard people say that, "Well, you know, I don't really, I think, you know, Chestnut Green makes more sense to put our attention there," or Route One. People downtown are, um, are, are just, I mean, the people of, of Foxborough are just adamant that downtown is where we want to, uh, we want to put our attention. And in fact, when they were asked, the second question, when they were asked, "What do you consider as the center of Foxborough?", ninety-four point three percent, an overwhelming majority, said downtown Foxborough. Of the rest, two, two and a half percent said Chestnut Green, and the two and a half percent said Route One. And for, you know, I've been, I've been at this for a long time now, and so have a number of you, we've been, this is like year number five now that we're, that we're talking about this. And, um, during that time, I've never really heard, other than, you know, we've entertained the notion of thinking about what would it cost to lease and things like that, we've never really seriously considered town hall being anywhere but in the downtown area. You know, we've talked about maybe the post office, but most of the time, our attention's been on where it currently is. But now there's a new process with a different group, the town hall working group. It's a group that, until recently, hasn't had, hasn't been accessible to the public, because the meetings haven't been posted, um, the, the location and the times of the meetings, until recently, till, I think, the, just the most current meeting. So there's been no opportunity for public input. The group is making, the group itself is making important decisions out of sight of the public. They've looked at a number of sites, eliminated a number of sites, probably the most important decision that the group has made was to reconsider the, the whole idea of whether town hall belongs at the town, downtown Foxborough or not. That, that wasn't a decision that was made, that I've seen made in a, in a public setting, that was made by, by this group, um, outside of, of publicly accessible meetings that people could attend. And I, I would really argue that this was, this is really an enorm, if you really believe that there's, that there's a good argument, and I, 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 you know, I sincerely believe that the people of, of that group believe that there's a good argument to be made for moving town hall somewhere else, you, you missed the opportunity to bring the townspeople along with you. You know, I don't understand this, this whole strategy, you've got two groups of people, people who are going to be no on this issue no matter what, they just don't want to pay for new town hall. And then there's the people who are yes, if they're given a reasonable, um, proposal to vote for. And you're taking the yes people, and you're splitting them up into two groups, and now you're pitting them against each other. And so, you know, there's going to be hundreds of people who were really very, you know, i- i- immersed in the, in the master planning process, who are going to, no matter what, you know, if, if, if you now say the town hall is going to be in Chestnut Green, they're never going to vote for that. I mean, I know myself, I'm not going to, I wouldn't vote for that, I really, in my heart of hearts, believe it belongs around, around downtown. So now you've got two groups of, who are, who are, you know, you, you could very well now get to the point where you'll never get this through-town meeting, because you'll never have the votes, because you've split the yes vote in half. And I think it's, it's very reasonable to look at this a little bit longer term and, and think, you know, by, by putting forward multiple sites, you're really kind of coming up with a really creative way to, to what I think is snatch defeat from the jaws of victory here. At the last town meeting in the fall, you came, you know, the, the town came very close, I mean, I voted against it because I just thought that it was just, just a little bit too big. And what we heard at town meeting was people saying that they just thought the proposal was a little bit too big, make it a little smaller, you know, make a few, slightly fewer of the private offices, and people would vote for it. But now we've seemed to have gone off in this other direction, and I, I, I'm really worried about, you know, whether we're going to, if, if this continues, whether we're going to get to a point where we just cannot get this, get this done. As I, as I, as I always do, whenever I get, get interested in something, I went off and I did some research, and shockingly, there's lots of other cities and towns in the United States that are faced with this exact problem, where they have a town hall that's coming apart, and they're, you know, gee, do they want to, and it's downtown, do they want, it's hard to develop there, do they want to sell that and move somewhere else? And almost invariably, they choose to stay in the downh- downtown, because it makes sense, and it's what the residents want. And it's so common, in fact, if you, there's a, um, if you go to the GSA website, um, I think it's gsa.gov, there's a lot of advice there that you can find about exactly this, and I'll just finish by, by reading a little bit of that, because I think it's, I think it's pretty instructive for what you're doing here. So a lot of them missed, it says, "If the downtown looks neglected and the institutional leaders, including government, are not located there, any business that is considering moving to the community may notice their absence and conclude that the community lacks leadership. The presence of public buildings is one of the keys to a strong and vibrant downtown or town center. Many communities see, see economic and social benefits when the post office, the municipal building, the public library, and other important buildings stay or expand downtown. Conversely, when they leave, the fabric knitting downtown starts to unravel." So, you know, I, I, I would ask you tonight to, to, you know, show some vision, exercise some leadership, you know, there's a, there's a great quote that, that Bill Belichick uses when he talks to the team before the game, and he tells them, "Do your job." You see that on television all the time when he's talking to the team, and I would so, so say to you, as, you know, I know you, I, I know you all, I respect you tremendously, but I would ask you to do your job, this is your job. Don't outsource this decision to a, a, um, um, non-binding referendum. Something that I, I've talked to a number of people in town, people have been here longer than I have, is nothing we've ever, I don't think it's anything we've ever done before, a non-binding referendum, it's your decision, and eventually you're going to have to make it, because you have to bring something to town meeting. So that's where I am, thank you very much for listening, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Larry.
Any other citizens? Come on up, Bill.
Bill and David, welcome to the town hall club now.
Good evening.
Name for the record, please.
Thanks, thanks to Larry for, um, for his, um, review of, of the master plan process and what the planning board, uh, this board and the community has gone through to get to the point we are with the master plan. Throughout the discussion...
For the record, for the record, Bill. Nate?
Oh, hi. For the record, I'm the old guy from fifteen Birch Tree Road, Bill Greeter.
Thanks, Bill.
So we got to the point where we are with the master plan, and in the process, every time we've talked publicly about it, um, and during the process, we talked about how it's a working document. And, um, it's, it's a roadmap of where the community would like, uh, at that time, to be, or where, a direction for it to go in. And as the community's, um, desires change, the, the master plan is going to have to change to reflect that. And one of the instances that we brought up in the discussion was if a town hall redo, uh, was not supported financially, um, at town meeting for a vote, and had to go someplace else, that the master plan was going to have to be rewritten to accommodate that choice that the town had made. So the planning board absolutely doesn't want to be a fly in the soybean, we have, we don't have a, a dog in where the thing goes. Our, our dog really is, um, the master plan process, the fact that we got all this information from the people. We had over six hundred people come, which is, you know, two and a half times more we get at, at a town meeting, so it's a substantial voting block. So regardless of the decision that this board makes, I think that has to be taken into account, it's just, without, um, a goodly portion of that voting block, nothing's going to go forward. I think what will help is, I, I think that the, the, this group, um, that's working on it has come a long way, and if I understand it correctly, because I haven't seen a, a, an official report, but I believe the idea is that no matter what, it needs to be a new building. And my guess is that, um, it's, it's economically shown to be more feasible or cheaper to go to, um, Chestnut Green. And, you know, an argument could be made, "Well, people don't want to pay more to keep it where it is." Well, they may or may not, depending on what that amount is. And, and so I think something that clearly needs to be defined is what the actual costs are, not what the projected costs are, not what the supposed costs are. not what the projected costs are, not what the supposed costs are, but what, what the costs are going to be to move for temporary housing. That in itself is going to be an issue because it's not going to be downtown. You know, it may very well be Chestnut Green, it may very well be some other place. So, we as a community are going to have to deal with that reality, even if overwhelmingly, the town thinks that it's the right thing to do. So, we could throw the baby out with the bathwater by saying, well, we absolutely want it there, but, oh, we have to move it offsite. I think all conversations have, have shown that it, it'd be very difficult to build a new facility onsite just because of no staging area and, and that sort of thing. All that being said, I think if this board doesn't pay attention to what the current data shows, and that's that the townspeople that came out are looking to keep it there, I think the only way that you can go against that is to do what you're talking about with a referendum question. But even then, when it goes to Town Meeting for a vote, if you don't have the, if you don't have the bodies in the seats, it isn't going anywhere anyhow. So, I don't envy the task you have. I wish I could convince a couple of members on the board to pick up their wallets and would all write a check in, but Jim said he doesn't have his wallet with him.
Seriously, you're pointing to me?
So, although it's, I think it's tradition that the new guy picks up the tab, so.
There you go, there you go.
I know, you and Bill are going to have to...
Yeah, they want to figure out that one.
So anyhow, it's, I, I think, if you don't, if you, if you don't stay with the current master plan, you absolutely do have to have a referendum to just see what the flavor is. But what does that really mean? It's non-binding, so you're still going to have to make a decision.
Right.
So you're going to get shot for a sheep as a lamb, no matter what anyhow, which is a great thing to think about when you're going home tonight, have a cup of tea. But Larry's, Larry's correct, there's a tremendous amount of people that are sitting back waiting to see what this goes, how this goes. And I think we, you know, our big goal, the Planning Board's big goal is to keep people involved. We're trying to figure out how to get their attention. I think you folks have done it all by yourselves, thank you very much. And so, I look forward to seeing how you manage to get through this. And we should all be friends afterwards because it's, ultimately, it's about our community and what's best for the, for the community. It's a question of whether we can get people to pay for it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other?
Hi. Paul DeFazio, twenty-three Richard Street. I actually came originally to talk about the, you know, putting minutes on the website, and hopefully the new IT will provide that technology because I think people do understand and expect that kind of stuff now. People don't want to have to go bother Bob and say, hey, can you go rustle in the back and find me some stuff from like three years ago? And I know they do, they do their best to get all the minutes on and everything like that. But it, you know, if it's a, you know, may get them on, or, you know, as opposed to must get them on, it's different. And I think it's important. I think it, it shows transparency, but more important, where I'm blending it into this topic is, this is Groundhog Day. We do the same thing over and over, players change, but it's the same stuff. But sometimes we, I, I feel that we waste time and we waste money going over things that if we did have minutes, if we could go back to meeting minutes, and who said what, and why was that argued, and what was, now, I think, I think things change, but you know what? The information is education, it's history. And it will do nothing but help us move forward quicker and better, and it'll be more helpful. But the most important thing, and I just want to mirror, I thought what Larry Thomas said was brilliant. I don't have as much feeling on where it is. I mean, I agree that maybe the downtown would be great for the master plan, but I, again, I don't have a dog in that fight quite as much as Larry does, but he's a hundred percent right. If, if, if we don't open this up to the town, and we don't get the town involved, and that could have been by clicking on minutes, you know, in the future, for things like this, we're always going to pound our heads against the, you know, the wall. The people want to know, and let's face it, people do not have the time to come to these meetings or even turn on the TV and when is it on, and blah, blah, blah. They want to be able to Google it. I've heard it in the last hour, oh, I Google this, I Google that. That's what people want. They want instant information. It's just we're catching up, and I, I know that the government, we're the last one to catch up. So, I just leave you with, I am so much in favor of you putting any and all minutes on. I mean, for God's sakes, we pay for them at a lot of these ad, at the AdCom. We pay to have them done, and people don't get to see them. It's crazy. But I'll tell you the other thing, I wished I had had them in this last year, and I'm talking as, I'm not on the AdCom anymore, I'm done. But boy, I would have loved to have had the last three years worth because there was so many people that said one thing in one meeting, and another thing in another meeting, another thing. And it would just be nice to go click. That's not what you said, and, and here's, you know, here's where the truth is. But I, I'm so, I'm so much in favor of seeing this Town Hall thing going. These guys were right, they had it, had it by this much last time, just did not get the town involved enough. And all I can say is, there's ways to do it, and I hope you do it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, can we consider doing the update? You know, David, if you could walk us through the update first, and then talk about the...
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll give you a full presentation as to where we're at on, on this issue.
Okay. So at the, the most recent Town Hall Committee meeting, as you may have heard, we are looking at two sites, the present location on, on South Street. We have not determined whether to build new or to renovate in addition at this point. We have not determined that. And we are looking at an alternate site on Pace and Road, which is land that we own, which will never be able to go on the tax rules. Recently, one of the members presented to the, to the Planning Board on July tenth, and kind of outlined the framework of our discussions and where we were going. And we understand there was some pushback regarding the, the master plan, and the fact that the master plan is, is a working guide, and we are cognizant of that. The members of the committee, they don't want to make this decision that Town Hall's going to be exactly where it is, or Town Hall's going to go to Pace and Road. As town employers, our number one priority is to give the employees a clean, safe working environment, and that's what our number one goal is, to give them adequate workspace so they can do their jobs effectively and efficiently. I think the question is, how do we get there? And I think that's one of the things that, on the committee, we're struggling with right now. I will tell you that the focus of the next committee meeting, ironically, to Paul's point and Larry's point, is how best to get the information out to the public. We're going to spend a large part of that meeting on, to strategize on how to do that. But I think it's also important that we lay out the economic impact of both sites, both from estimated cost and potential revenue base. We had a report from the Financing Subcommittee on how to fund the soft costs. The Financing Subcommittee recommended using the free cash to fund five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in soft costs, requires majority vote at Town Meeting. Right now, there's a three point one million dollar balance in, in the free cash. We also talked about the timeline. We're still on track for RFP in mid-September, and to vote on soft costs for November Town Meeting. I think it's important that, to get to a final cost for what the building is really going to cost the town, we have to get to the soft costs, we have to get into some sort of design development to determine what the final cost is. We have, we have estimates, we have several different conceptual plans that committee members have put together, based on square footages, put together through the department heads. We've kind of pulled that back, we're around fourteen thousand square feet, down from twenty thousand and seventeen thousand square feet respectively. I think the goal is to get a Town Hall that works for the employees, for the citizens, and that's economically feasible. I think that's what, that's what the goal is. And again, we, we talked about the, the website, getting a link right on the, on the homepage. Right now, you, you can find the, the agenda, you got to go to the Planning Board, and then you got to go to a, a link on the Planning Board. I think it's important that we get a link right on the homepage, Town Hall Update. You know, we think that the voters should decide eventually where their money's going to go and the location of Town Hall. And we have to, I, I think we have to give them an option. I don't think we can just say, there it is, it's Town Hall. Because no matter what you do, you're going to offend somebody. You know, well, you know, you had, you had this, this site and this site. We looked at, at eight potential sites because we wanted to make sure that we anticipated some pushback from, from the citizens. We wanted to make sure that we looked at the post office. We wanted to look at, want to make sure we looked at maybe some available land at Schneider Electric and some of the other sites that could possibly come, come up. I, I, I think the intent is, is to do the right thing. Whether we're actually doing the right thing remains to be seen. But I agree, I think, I think we're at the point now where we got to get more public involvement. But ultimately, I think, I think the, the voters have to decide what they want to do.
John?
Yeah, I just, and thanks for all the work you've been putting in, Dave. Just a point of clarification, last May, when we organized this working committee, and, and again, time has gone on, I just need clarification from you, Bill, and from you, David. This was to, to come back to this board with a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Right, now, the thing is, is this working group advising the Board of Selectmen? Or is it advising Bill?
They're actually advising me, and then I'm going to recommend back to the board.
Okay, so you're going to compile all this and...
Right, and let me just, let me just be clear, because a couple of clarifications need to be made here because it's important that, you know, the public understands this, is that the board didn't create this committee, I did. And, and, and it's, it's not really, it's not even a committee, it's a working group. It's an advisory committee to me. And, and that's important because that's, there was a process there that, but which I needed to get up to speed on all the things that have happened over, over, over the past three to four years about this very topic. And I dare say, it goes back, back even further than that. I wanted to make sure that we weren't making mistakes, I wasn't making mistakes in making wrong recommendations to the board and to the public about this particular issue. So what's been going on the past several weeks, including the discussion tonight, is exactly what I wanted to see happen. I want to get the perspectives from a lot of people as to how they really feel about this issue. And, and the comments made earlier by a couple of speakers are passionate comments about where the building should be, exactly what I want to hear. But you know, that's the reason why we have to let the public decide that because, you know, quite honestly, I'm not comfortable making that recommendation to anyone without further support from the public as to what they, how they really feel about this. We can't get the public to even decide on this issue until they have all the information in the hands that we've been getting. And we intend to provide them all that information. It's interesting because, as David correctly points out in his update, that, you know, we have considered a lot of information. We have, I say we, the, the working group, which by the way, I never even appointed anyone. I just asked people to participate, and they all did. And we still continue to get new members. People just want to come into the meetings, they, they come in. So therefore, there's no formal requirements to, to post what we do. And I was told that this is probably a good idea to do, so we did it. Because I do want to get, make sure we get as much exposure as possible. And I, and I had a, you know, an exchange today with my, with the public asking for more information. I'm happy to give it, not, not an issue for me. We want to be as transparent as possible on this issue. This is a very important pivotal issue for the community. I, I hear all the comments made about the past, and I'm a town plan, I'm a farm, I was born and raised that way, so I get that completely. The issue for me, though, is if I, if I go back and look at the survey, there wasn't a question that said, shall the Town Hall be in the center of town? That was not in the survey. There were comments that were made in the survey by individuals who said, I, I prefer to see the Town Hall stay in, in the center of town. There were a couple of questions that said, if you had to spend dollars, you have public dollars, where would you prefer, and, and it was ranked as to where those dollars should be spent. There was a ranking of the priority issues, Town Hall was considered number ten on that list, list of rankings. Number two was downtown revitalization, don't disagree, I think it needs to be absolutely done. Is that, is that, is that something that's absolutely pivotal to the Town Hall location? Remains to be seen, because there are different arguments that can be made on both sides of that equation. So, our, our goal was to evaluate every single option and to present it to the public and say, look, you decide. Because you know something? This is important, this is your community. It's not my community, it's your community. And you decide what's where, where it should go, because, quite honestly, as David correctly points out, we don't care in terms of where it's located. The bottom line, our goal is to find a good office, functional Town Hall that everybody in this town can embrace and be proud of, not just the employees, but the people who walk in that building every day should be proud of. And say, that's my Town Hall, you know, and it's, and whether it's located in the center of town or located at, at Chestnut Green, it's really up to the town to decide. I, quite honestly, I can, I can see the arguments made on both sides of the equation. And that's why we're not, we're uncomfortable making a recommendation on one versus the other. It's also point, good to point out, too, that I've heard that you've gone three times for that, for the Town Hall location, it still hasn't been supported yet. So the question I asked, I have to keep asking is, is that the right decision to go there? If that's part of, if that's truly the case? Because, but something's missing along the way here. And so, you know, I went back and I thought about the projects that we worked on in Deadon when I, before I came here, and there were, there are three major components to a project. One is the site, the second is, is the, is the finances, and three is the political will. And if, if there's no political will, and/or if there's no finances, or there's no agreement on the site, you haven't got a project. So my thought would be, and look, let's agree on a site, let the town decide where the site is, and let's get out of the debate as to where, where it should be because, you know, quite honestly, I, I, we can present to you, and we will present to you all, some very good reasons as to why it could be located in either location. So that, that's really where we're at.
Yeah, I, I think, I think to add to that, you know, we want to take the emotions out of it, and we want to present the facts, pros and cons for both sites. There's, there's pros and cons for both sites. We want to try and pull the emotions out of it and allow people to make informed decisions.
Right.
When you make decisions based on emotion, you tend to not always make the best decision.
So, I just wanted to...
Just one comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. Going back to what Larry said, and I think, you know, that ought to be repeated time and time again, is that if municipal government buildings abandon the center of town, it sends a message to all folks who would give thought to co-locating in the center of town. And, you know, I, I went on record when I was running for this position that I really want Town Hall to remain exactly where it is for that purpose. It's, downtown is, you know, we've been talking about downtown revitalization for twenty-five years, and it's, it's gradually continuing to hold its own, but it's really, you can't call it revitalized. But if, if we take, say, we, say we go with this, you know, non-binding referendum, ultimately, the decision still comes back to the Board of Selectmen. That's where, that's where this is all going to be packaged up and presented to the town. You know, and I'm wondering, I'm wondering why we would go down this process when, you know, I think we have enough input from the, the master planning process to, to know the answer. Now, you're saying that the other side of the equation was never asked. But I still think there was enough passion to say, we understand that that would be the anchor of our, of what, what remains of our town downtown.
Sure.
And without it, our downtown is going to drift.
Well, and further from that was that, at the time, there really wasn't an option. I mean, nobody really talked about what the option was. There was, if the question, if somebody had asked a question, or if a question was asked in the master planning process, if you had a choice as to where Town Hall should be located, Pace and Road, or pick a, pick a location beyond Pace and Road in downtown, what would your preference be in some piece? And the majority of voters came back and said, Town Hall should be where it's present location. I'd feel a lot more comfortable about that kind of a survey. But that, that kind of approach was not used, because at the time, there really wasn't, it wasn't being contemplated. And I get that. That's why master plan processes are great for what they do, but at the end, but they're also a, a living document in the sense that things change over time, and more options become available to people that weren't considered prior at the time when the document is written. So, listen, I, I'm a huge supporter of master plans, huge supporter of master plans. I think it's a great process. However... However, in this particular case, I think there's information that we now have in hand, that if we don't provide that to the public, I think we're doing a disservice to the public as well. And that is that, if, and, and the, the major considerations in that are, that if we were to build on another location other than the existing Town Hall, we could stay in the existing Town Hall during that construction phase, it would not have to endure the cost of, of moving, other than the moving it to the new location once it was built.
Just, just a question, was a consideration given to building behind these?
Yes.
And some test sites were being drilled today?
We, we were, we were, I don't know if they're actually going today on our, our, they were supposed to be done last week and they, and they got, had to get rescheduled, so we, we still don't have that information. But the other side of that was that, even if we were to build in the back of that building, we would not be able to stay there, based upon our initial examination, because we don't think there's enough room for parking and the staging and to build, build the construction while the building is being, being built. And in addition to that, it creates another parking impact to some of the surrounding businesses who use that parking space during, you know, for, for public use and support of, of local businesses. So that's another impact that we, that we've taken into consideration along this, during this discussion. But having said that, there is, it's important to point out that if the, if the land at Payson Road, which by the way, is state land that's given to us, we would have to actually change some of the prepusing of that land and go back to legislature to get that done. But it's really not a huge change from what I can see. That, but it's, but having said that, they, the, that land is supposed to be used for public purposes. And so therefore, as, as was pointed out, that land is not taxable land into the future. It's land that we can actually continue to, we should use for public purposes for that reason. However, conversely, if we were to reuse the site in the Town Hall, of the site for, for, for a, for a private use, you could actually turn it into taxable property and to further support the uses in the downtown. So I, I think that there's a lot of things to be talked about in terms of how you, you address downtown, one of which is that we address the land that's, the fire station and the, and the, and the funeral home, I think we should move on that sooner rather than later, to address that. And then the second thing is that if that land becomes available for other use, for use other than Town Hall, we use that for the same, to, to support the uses in the downtown. So again, it becomes part of an overall downtown revitalization strategy. So there are different schools of thought. Some people say that if you, if you, if you remove your government buildings from your downtown, that, that you, that you take away, that you send a message that you're abandoning the downtown. You know, there are other schools of thought saying that if you can re, better use the existing sites for ways that will support the downtown, you can actually improve the, the scenario as well. So it's a, it's a, it's a difficult, difficult question. My sense is that because you have land that will not likely be used for, for other, pretty purposes other than public purpose, that's an opportunity that has to be presented to the public, because otherwise it's gonna, it could be used for other purposes into the future, but if, if you have a need that's, that's there now, and it actually could help reduce some of the overall cost of construction, relocation costs, things of that nature, if we're building on, on that location now. The other thing, other thing I wanted to point out is that the auditorium that's actually on the land behind the, behind the Town Hall, behind the, the Public Safety Building, is a building that's falling, the building is falling into disrepair and, and should be taken down. We, 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 that's one of the areas that we're considering as a possibility, but there's also other areas in that land area around the, the Public Safety, behind the Public Safety that could be used as well for Town Halls, cause there are easement issues for parking easements and things like that, that we need to explore further. So we're not saying, at this point in time, I'm not recommending to, that you specifically cite, select a location for Payson Road, other than the, the town owned land behind Payson Road, behind the Public Safety Building, because to be specific at this point, I think would be inappropriate, given the fact we still have more work to do on that. But the challenge we're faced with is that we need to know, before we go further, which direction the town really wants to go. If the town truly wants to feel, it feels passionate about the center of town, we're, we're fine with it, we really are. We have, we have no dog in this fight. And that's, that statement, I've used that statement before, we have, we don't really, it doesn't matter to us either way. However, if, if the town, we don't wanna be in a position where we say, go build it in, in the center of town, and by the way, we could've built it potentially in the, in Payson Road for less price and for less inconvenience of, of moving twice the entire operation.
Bill, when did the concept of having a non-binding referendum by ballot, when, when did that idea...
We, we talked about it during the...
Whose, whose idea was it?
It just came out of the, it came out of the discussions at the, at the meeting, and I don't know if, if even if I suggested it, but maybe...
Either you or Sharon.
Yeah, I think Sharon suggested it, Sharon Watson suggested me, actually, it was Sharon that was, suggested the idea, that she said, you know, if we can't decide, let the public decide. And, and then we really, we're, we're in a, we're in a tough spot. I mean, we, we wanna go forward, and we, and we're anxious to move forward, but we can't even figure out which way to go with the design money until we know which location that we're, that we're being supported on. And thus, the idea of holding the referendum prior to the town meeting would give us the ample, the opportunity to then know where, where the public really sits on this issue, and then we could ask for the, for the funds accordingly, and direct the funds accordingly from that point forward. So that's our, that's our thinking, and that's where we've, we've been coming from.
I was present at the planning board meeting when the presentation was made, and, you know, it really was a, a good discussion by the planning board in terms of really what, all the points that Larry raised earlier, what the input had been. But I do remember us talking about potentially, how do we get this information out the best way? We weren't talking about a binding referendum possibility that night, but we were talking about potentially as part of the evolving master plan process, that is there a way in this timeframe for the planning board to continue, like if they were provided with all the financials, to create some way of getting an update on input from the original downtown strategy that was developed? Because there's a whole binder on the downtown strategy that came out of that process that really does identify that. The, the sense was that that's where the Town Hall should be, is downtown. So if there's, if there are gonna be any steps taken to potentially change that, at a minimum, or ideally, I feel like working with the planning board would be a terrific way to make sure that we just continue with that natural process.
I think they're an integral player in the, in the discussion, no question about it.
So I guess, I, I'd like to suggest that, you know, perhaps we talk with the planning board about the feasibility of them being able to accomplish that in this timeframe to allow us to keep up with the timeframe that this committee has established, because it is...
The, the issue before you tonight though, is if the board is, is of a mind to say, look, you know, we're comfortable with staying at Town Hall, we're probably gonna, okay, we're okay with that too. Because ultimately, now we have direction, and then, and then we can move forward from there, and we'll, and we'll move on from there. But if the, if the board is uncomfortable with, with the notion that, look, we have this other option, and it does present some interesting thoughts about, hey, look, you know, we can do this, and it, and it may be a less costlier option that, that we can look at, but then, 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 you know, maybe, but we should, maybe we should go forward and, and get the referendum done. But the, the challenge is, is that the window is closing very quickly on this issue, because we need to get this petition before this legislature and, and get them to look at it before the, the end of this month. It is unfortunate that we're at this point, but, but it is what it is, and I, and I just wanted to make, make sure that everybody's clear on that point, that if, if we don't act on this tonight, we probably will miss the window for getting it on the November ballot. So I, I, it's unfortunate, but then we're at that point.
Now, wasn't another option, I mean, doesn't have to go on the November ballot, there could be two ballots?
Yes, and, and that's what, that's the, actually, the option we talked about, and I, I actually brought, brought here tonight. The, the, the action would be to, to actually request a, a special election within the state election, so we would actually have two ballots. One would be the state ballot, and the other would be the town ballot. And I would have the, the questions on, the question on, on the ballot. The, the issue though, the challenge is that we need to have the legislature act on that, and before they get out, they go out of session the end of the month. And so we, we have the commitment from our state representative and, and the governor's office, that they will file a bill immediately to get it, get it reviewed.
So it doesn't matter, whichever path you choose to go down, the schedule is the same?
Yeah, exactly, well, it's doubtful that we'd be able to put this question on the state ballot, because September 4th is when that, this issue has to be resolved, and it has to be finalized, and then the Secretary of State actually has a lot of, a lot to say about what goes on with that ballot. And it's, 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 the impression I've received is that it would be very challenging for them to agree to that. So this way, we would be able to control the ballot by having our own special election within the state election. And it sort of puts the question to rest, is, that's really what we're looking to find, you know, is, is how do people feel about it? One way or the other. And truly know, and truly know one way or the other. I mean, I think there's, I think people have very well-intentioned about this. I don't, I don't doubt anything that, that, that the previous speakers have said about the issue, I think they feel very strongly about it, and they, and they feel passionate about it. I respect that, but I also know that there's another side to this coin that hasn't been looked at yet. And I think it's important that the public sees that too. That's our thought.
Jim?
Yeah, my thoughts, it's very tight, the timeline that we're looking to get. Now, I'm looking at the questions, you know, yes or no, Town Hall in the center, or yes or no, Town Hall in, in Payson. At the last meeting, we didn't even know that, where the second site was, all right? So the way my mind works, I'd wanna know all that information, either direct town people to get it, go in this direction. You know, one thing was said here that, you know, let's, let's try to make this decision without the emotion, let's, you know, look at the facts. I'm involved in four projects right now, and I talked to you a little bit about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Four municipal projects. One is all about emotion, it's the town of Bridgewater.
Sure.
Okay? They're redoing a, an old academy building right in the center, ridiculous amounts of money to rehab it, it's historic, it doesn't make sense with respect to parking or traffic, but they're spending a lot of money because it's all about emotion. They wanna keep that Town Hall right in downtown.
Yeah.
Tewksbury's kind of in the middle, it's, they're going forward, but they get the support of the town. They, they had the questions answered, and they, and they're going forward, and it's a successful project. Wellesley's trying to do a senior center, okay? It was all about technical dollars and, and it failed miserably, because it didn't get the support of the planning board or the zoning board, and actually, they're paying us a lot of good money to redo things twice. And, and it doesn't make sense, because they didn't involve the public, and it came back to bite them. So I, I see both sides. On, on one side, you know, if we move Town Hall away, that does free up that parcel to do some development, that could bring even more revitalization to Town Hall. But I was involved in those meetings, and I, and I did, it might not have been a specific question, but it was all about, you know, getting your dry cleaners, having the town people come into the town to do town business, because it's such a nice comment, and look at, look what's happening in New England, and everything's going to Route One, or, you know, moving it away. So financially, it might make sense, but taking the heart out is gonna rub people the wrong way.
Okay.
Especially if they were asked and, and participated, and it wasn't just one meeting, and I, I remember it was like yesterday, it was all about the casino, it was all about the power outages that we were having, when Hurricane Sandy came through.
Yeah, I was looking at the...
So from a master plan, you know, we wanted our own utility company back then, you know?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So that, so as a master plan, did we do it? No, but it was talked about, but downtown was a big focus. If you look at the last three projects that went to town meeting, all right, you had the high school, which is a $20 million project, 10 million came from grants, and, and 10 million about came from taxpayers. There was so much passion on that, because the superintendent went to people's houses, had coffees, sent the PTO groups out, and it was nearly unanimous, okay? And that was a project where it was HVAC and, and a new roof and things you do for your house, right?
Sure.
But that passed. The money from Town Hall supposedly went towards that rather than Town Hall, so then now the Town Hall's taken a little bit of a backseat. Next project came in was the library, okay? Didn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people, because who reads books anymore? Those arguments went back and forth, it was the economy dropping, but we got a grant, but there was still a lot of money that was going into that. But that group had a lot of passion, the library trustees, and they did the Facebook, and they did the coffees, and they got the, the word going, and it passed. This group, and then the third one was the turf field, okay? It was money that was left over from the school, and a lot of, you know, people, it was a want versus a need, it went through that, but there was a lot of passion, and they got the people out to vote, and it passed by a wide margin. I just, and, and this isn't a fault of any of the committees, past or present, there is no passion for a new Town Hall in, in this town. There's a lot of passion, and it gets ugly, you know, against, you know, why do we wanna do it, just very little index and, and move on? The right thing to do is a new Town Hall, there's no doubt. But how are we gonna get the word out there with passion? It's not gonna be emails, it's not gonna be going through a planning board meeting, which is not televised, and, and somebody had said it earlier, nobody watches these meetings as much as we would want to get the word out. It needs a group. Now, the group that we have is going through the systematic process, I haven't seen any of it yet, I just found out where the, the new site is.
Yeah.
But between now and this ballot, I don't know how it's gonna be possible and not, you know, we, we need everything we have on our side. What Larry is saying is, I think, rings true, the group that was supporting it to stay in town center is gonna be divided at best. You have like a bug on your thingy.
Oh, please.
There it goes, sorry. So, so we're gonna lose a lot of that, whether we like it or not, and there's no amount of wooing that's gonna bring it back, they're gonna feel slighted, because they did go to the meetings, and they did hear, you know, the, the presentations from the consultants, and I remember the, all the pitches of downtown in, in New England, and the old, you know, crisscross of the common, it rang true to a lot of people. So to take that away and then put it on a yes or no ballot may work, but between, you know, you get July, August, September, the kids are going back to school, I don't know if this group has the ability to get all this done, but I would be hard pressed to say yes for this, unless they had the details, especially the third time around on this. So, you know, if we've got one, you know, a, a bird in the hand, which is, a lot of people want it in downtown, I think the passion is to put it there and make it work, whether we knock it down, move it to the back, but to divide the effort and short notice, and, and again, maybe it makes sense financially, but I think we're gonna lose the battle if we try to do this.
Right on.
And, and, you know, I, I wish I had all the plans and the details, but I don't. And again, and no fault of the committee, but we're trying to squeeze something real quick, and I think it's gonna bite, bite us a little bit.
That's, that's, and, and Matt Schaefer, I could just say one more thing, I just, it's important that everybody understands that, that I just went through this, this whole question, process, and, and ended up, at the end of the day, ended up, we ended up building everything right in the center of town in Dedham. And that's fine, I mean, at, at the end of the day, I was great, it was great for me, because I was glad to see it finally happen. And this is really what this conversation's about. It's not about picking and choosing a site from my perspective, it's about making it happen. And, you know, and if, if the, if the input tonight is that, that if we decide to go somewhere else, because it'll create and divide the, the support base, whatever support base there is for this project, even further, then, then maybe that's not the direction we should take. But this is the kind of conversation we have to have, you know, because we really need to know, the group that I have is feeling very, very challenged right now, because they, they wanna get forward, go move forward under the design phase, but we can't do that if we don't know where people really want us to build it. So if it's direction of this board, I mean, to, to forego the, the ballot question, so be it. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lose sleep over that. The, the, the bottom line is that, if, if you feel that you, that we could, that you can support it being in the downtown, then that's the direction we'll take, and that's the direction we'll move towards getting a project built.
Jenny?
Um, speaking to Jim's comments, there was passion in regard to Town Hall, but the passion was whether we should build new or rehab. And in this binding question, it's, it says, it brings up that same conundrum, do reconstruct, rehabilitate or construct a new Town Hall at Foddy South Street? So, so that's, I, I, I think we have to decide, are we going to, are we gonna build a new Town Hall, no matter where it is, are we gonna build it? Now, like, I believe in 2011, because the public said, the Board of Selectmen and the elected officials, you, you decide whether we build or reconstruct, or rehab the, the Town Hall. And I believe it was in two thousand eleven that the board, uh, voted to do a new town hall. And then the next year in two thousand twelve, we revoted it again as a confirmation of that. I, I believe that those were the years. So the Board of Selectmen have already, well, the previous board, now there's two new members. But the, the Board of Selectmen had said, new, build new. At Forty, at Forty South Street.
Unfortunately, we're not, we're not even at that stage.
Well, I, I know, but, but, but the thing is, the same, the, the public is gonna say, hey, wait a minute. Why should I be voting on this? You guys, we elected you to vote on it. To, to decide. The Selectmen have already decided a few years ago, that, those two boards decided, build new at, keep it, keep it at Forty South Street. And, and, and are we doing the same thing over and over again, just putting new ingredients in?
Well, the, the thing is that we have gone back and we've strongly, we're, we're, we're actually taking the building apart and looking at it piece by piece and looking at all the details associated with the, with the reconstruction process, but, you know, and there are different schools of thought as to what's gonna be done, but I think that the majority, the, the sense I have from the group that, that's advising me on this is that they are, they are more, more strongly leaning towards the idea of building a brand new building. Because they, they, with all the things that have to go into a rehab rehabilitation project, you gotta meet the new code requirements. You've got letting in, in the roof of that building. You've got, you gotta put a new elevator in it. You're gonna do all the, and there's, there's some real limits on the, on the, on the space requirements that have to be looked at. We have to build more, you know, more space for, for meeting space. Um, and I know that, and Jack is here tonight and Jack, Jack feels, he's looked at this quite, quite extensively and he's, he's actually opined on this in, in, in an editorial about the fact that that's the direction we should take because, uh, we should build a new building and, uh, whether it's on the existing site, in the parking lot, whoever the case may be. But I think that's the direction that, that the group as a whole, I think, is leaning in that direction.
Bill, and I think, um, the, the board voted for that. And there's no doubt in my mind, looking at the old, the town hall with the elevators and the hand, all that. There's no doubt in my mind that it just wasn't the right thing to do to try to renovate it.
Right.
We're five votes. It's not gonna pass
Fair enough.
unless you get the, uh, the votes of the people that raised their hand. And that, and I think that's the quandary.
Yeah.
So, you know, what, what's gonna change? So we're gonna go through this process again and come up with new plans. Uh, you know, a couple of members left, a couple of new members came into the building committee. But unless there's passion to go and sell this, you know.
Again, let's go back to the, to the issue, the three issues. Site, funding, passion, all, you know, political will. And if there's a political will, if any one of those elements is missing, we will not have a project. And, and right now, we think we have a plan for the financing. We think we, we, you know, we're trying to move, move towards a, a site selection. And, um, and then it'll be up to us collectively to, to get the political will, to, to get, to educate the public on why this is needed. And it's really all about education and information, getting as much information out to people as possible.
But Bill, as you know, town hall has no constituency.
There's no constituency, yeah.
So the passion's gonna come from us.
But, but I will tell, I, I'll, I'll actually ask, uh, present an alternative thought to that because I thought about that too. I said, but you know something? It should be the, the, the passion of everyone in this community. This is your building. It's not our building. We happen to live there during the day. But it's the town's building. And they should be, and, and, you know, the good communities that are out there today, you know, and, and, and Foxborough's a great community. It's not, that's not an issue, but good communities, when, when you think about it, they rally around their government when they need to. And, and, you know, right now, we have a building that's, we have great elements of our government, but the town hall itself, the building, is in tough shape. And it needs support. And it's really, I think that the community itself needs to rally around this project. And I, I'm hoping that through the education and the information that we can provide collectively, that we can hope, hopefully change that direction.
Well, then can we eliminate, reconstruct, rehabilitate? From the one A?
That's why I'm here. That's, that's up to you. That's why I'm here.
And just say, construct a new one at Forty South Street or construct a new one on Payson Road? If, if you're gonna get, if you're gonna ask for the public.
If you're, if the, if it's the board's will to say, build a new one at, 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 uh, at Forty South Street, we're fine with that too. Because we, we're, we're willing to go forward to the next meeting and say, okay, this is the direction we need to take.
Well, if you want my input, I'm, I'm a firm believer in that it belongs to downtown. I mean, if it, if it moves to someplace where the fire station is, that's still okay. Forty South Street is still my preference. Um, to, to go down this road, you know, I think we have the information. I think we've solicited a, a lot of opinion, a lot of input from the citizens. And I think the message is clear is that they want it in our downtown area and, um, you know, personally, I'd like it at Forty South.
And, and you talked about that one of the problems with building a new town hall in the back end, the back area of the parking lot, would be parking situation. Well, how long would the, how long would the construction's process be? And also, you gotta remember, in the summer, people can pack at the IGO building.
Right.
And, you know, there's other.
There are other options, yeah. Well, it's probably, I would say.
So I don't think packing should be really.
Well, it's a, it's a safety issue for, for staging for, uh, not only town hall employees, but for patrons to town hall. You know, once, once you have lulls running around and deliveries and, um, you're gonna have, you know, extensive site work going on. So you'll have, uh, big machinery, uh, concrete trucks, pumping trucks. There's gonna be a lot of activity. They need all the room that they can get. If we restrict their staging areas, it's just gonna increase the, the time, timeframe that it's gonna take to construct a building. So we, if we're gonna build behind, they have to have free unabated access, um, to that whole site to get this thing moved along as quickly as possible. And I think if you phase it, you know, build, leave it, then, then come back later and knock it down. The fact that you're doing it in two stages, that increased cost is gonna offset the, the rent anyways.
So if you were gonna build new at Forty South Street, you would just demolish town hall as is, the present town hall?
Yes.
And work.
Start, start from scratch.
Any other, I'm sorry, Steve?
Jack?
Can you take Steve first?
Okay.
Come on up, Steve.
Steve?
No torpedoes here. Steve Uden, twenty-one, Carminev. Thanks, uh, everybody for what you do. Um, I'm sort of in the club here too politically. My question is, is this about the actual referendum question? We had a almost record low voter turnout in our last election. And now we're asking for an emotional or clinical decision from the public on an item that has been said, I don't know if it can be validated, where there's very little passion in the community wide, like there have been on other issues in this town. I'm not sure that the voting data we would get back if a referendum were to be held would be real.
Conclusive?
It would be real. I'm sorry, yes. Uh, it, but, but it wouldn't be, um, rock solid because I don't think we'd get a lot of turnout. And I just, you know, would like the, the Board of Selectmen and Chair, thank you for letting me speak, um, to consider how useful a referendum would be and any baggage that might come that would, um, and God bless our new selectmen and our new town manager, but I think a lot of us know what the word upset the community means when we say things like that. And I don't, I don't know that we need another thing to upset even a small group of people right now. And I'm just approaching it from benign information coming in from a check off a box. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Actually, could I have, um, the gentleman from the committee?
Jack?
Yeah, go, go ahead. Come on up, Jack. Please.
Hi, I'm, I'm John Schleier, uh, from We Met Lane. I'd, I'd like to muddy the waters somewhat and say, one, one other option for the existing building would be to salvage all of the, uh, the, um, foundation walls. Knock down all of the, all of the exterior walls. And, and then add on to the front and or the back. And, uh, then build all new ex, exterior walls. That building right now to me is in, uh, in bad shape. Which I've ridden many, many lettuce. Uh, and I, I think that I like the site. I, I would like to see the, see the, everything from the grade on up is knocked down. Every, everything, some, uh, below, below grade is, is, is salvaged. And, and then build all, all the walls there and then add, add on to the back as we need and add, add on to the front as we need. Now, whether you wanna go up, uh, one story or, or, uh, or two, I'm not sure. But I, I would much rather do that than, than, than try to save any, any of the upper walls. Those are really in, uh, in, in, in bad shape.
Okay.
So, that's, that's nice.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Jack, were, were you, were you part of the ad hoc, ad hoc committee?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, you was.
And you had the same recommendation back then was to demolish it?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, I, I've been probably, probably, uh, five lettuce.
But all the presentations to the board though, I, I haven't seen you. It was mostly Dick, Haydecker.
Yeah.
So, and, and what's your background? You're,
He's an architect.
You're an architect?
Yeah. Been, been with Ford, Ford years.
He's been on, on the working group for the past several months now, so. He's been, been a good member, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
Bob? Thank you.
Well, that was interesting.
I just wanted to address Mr. Uden's comments with regard to what kind of showing you would get. Uh, in November, it's a governor's race. And you've got other key elements on there. You've got, uh, a bunch of questions, including the question on the casino. So I think you're gonna see probably in the neighborhood of sixty to seventy percent, which translates to about six to seven thousand voters as opposed to the six hundred you've gotten that Bill mentioned on the, uh, Planning Board Downtown Study. So I think the numbers are gonna speak for themselves. Whether or not you wanna do it, that's up to you. Um, you know, Bill's done the research. He's talked to Lauren Goldberg, who's a counsel, a couple of my page, who comes and speaks to town clerk, uh, on election issues all the time. Um, she's very well respected in, in the field. Um, knows what she's talking about. Um, I've seen the questions. Bill's done his work on them. So from that standpoint, the way they're worded, I know you raised a question about the wording on them. The state requires them to be worded in such a way, shall the town blah, 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 blah? Yes, no, that's how they have to be.
That's the only way you can put them all.
Okay, so to that question, so if it's a yes, no, alright, so we go through this process in November. And seventy percent say, okay, we want it at Payson Road. Okay, 'cause it's a yes, no. So we're not gonna ignore that, right? So the, the public has spoken. Then we get into the design process and we find out the Payson Road is twelve million dollars because we've gotta knock down the auditorium and this is, you know, this, that and the other thing. So what do we do at that point? We don't have any of our building data. We don't have any of our site plans done. But we have seventy percent saying we want it at Payson Road. Then we're gonna say, okay, it's gonna either be twelve million, and I'm just throwing numbers out. But how, how do we ask this question without knowing? You know, be careful 'cause you get what you, you may get what you ask. So they say, do it. And then we're gonna say, well, we can't afford that, so we're gonna do it at town hall even though you said to do it. It, it, in a few months, I don't know how we're gonna get that data to feel comfortable. I don't even have it now to present it that it's a good question.
We, we, our preliminary indications are that we, you know, we have options at Payson Road that we, you know, we don't have to build it at the auditorium. So we, there's actually other spaces on that site that we could build it on. So, um, it, we, the thinking was that it'd be nice to be able to, to take, to kill two birds with one stone, if you will. Address the, the need for new town hall at the same time, take out, take out a, a building that's really a, you know, a distraction to the, to the area.
But you, you can't condition the questions. If I want to hear, you're right, it's a yes or no.
They have to be very limited in scope.
Right.
Yeah. So it's almost like a false sense. It, it's almost like a fake question. The big picture is there, but there's no backup to say, if I vote for this, this is what I get. There's nothing there.
That's right, it's limited.
Well, I think that's where, that's where the public outreach is between now and the election.
Or November, so we got.
We have, we have to really get the information out there, pros and cons for both locations. And we really have, we have to educate.
But you'll have the information in, in, in form of plans and costs? Or just the information to vote?
Concepts.
Concepts.
Only, only because we don't have the money to, to hire any kind of experts at this point. That's why we're going to November. In November, how many, they ask for the, the money for design.
We're pretty sure that the soft costs will be the same whether we're building at, at South Street or Payson Road. You have the same components.
Yeah, but the capital cost is what.
Yeah, right.
That's what drives the number.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, usually it's eight or ten percent of the capital cost, so it's, you know, ten million versus an eight million, that's a couple hundred thousand dollar difference.
Right.
So we have to decide if we're gonna go down the referendum route.
That's the question before you tonight. Because unfortunately, we do have a limited window and it's, it's something that, you know, if, like I said before, if anything, if it's, if it's, if it's a position that the board is not comfortable taking, uh, we'll respect that and if, and we'll just move accordingly. Um, if you do wanna do that, we're gonna respect that too, either way.
If we decide to go the referendum route and then a few months down the road, circumstances change and we say, no, we don't wanna do the referen, can we cancel the referendum?
Well, you have to, we have to notice the public. We, we would just, or at this point, we're actually officially petitioning the state to, for the ability to actually hold a special election within a state election. Because we need that permission to do that. Because you don't have anything in your charter that allows us to do that. So, um, so we need the special legislation in order to, to at least ask a question. Once we get that permission, it's then, we then set the, set the, uh, uh, the details of the, of the ballot question, et cetera. And, um, and then we, we need thirty-five days prior to the election to post the actual warrant for the, uh, for the election. And, uh, Bob's the expert in this here and I'm, but, but that's, that's, at least that's what I've been told so far.
But you would have the thirty-five days prior, that would be your do or die date whether, whether?
To hold the, uh.
The state approval language and, you know, the, the posting of the warrant normally is like a couple of weeks before, but you'd have to, you have to have the ballots printed. Those have to be available for absentee voters. That's gonna be at least the thirty-five days. And, you know, you've got a whole series of things that you'd have to do to be prepared for that. And we have to have a separate election. It couldn't be, you know, on the same voting list. You have to program the memory cards, all of these additional things that we have to do. And you need, you, you need the forty-five days really to have that already.
So if we decide to have a referendum, we have a referendum?
Uh, you know, you'd have a few weeks before we do all of that. Um, because we gotta get through the election in September. The primary, all of that, you know, so we've got all of that time before.
You've got August and September to, to make that call, basically.
We would have to, pretty much by the middle of September, have a final decision.
Okay.
So what financial information would we have to provide to the public between now and then that could influence this outcome?
Well, the only information we're gonna have is based upon what the square footage costs and what the estimates are based on that square footage cost for a project at this point. Uh, the site costs, of course, are gonna have to be something that we, they're only, only estimates based upon what we have at this point. We don't have, the, the, the challenge we're faced with is that we don't have a financial resource to do a full-fledged analysis of, of, of both sites. So we, I mean, the idea would be that we get, we get Tommy to provide us the money so we can do those, the analysis on a, a site. But we want it to be at a position where we say, okay, once we get the, the RFP, we, we choose the, the architect to say, okay, here's your project. This is what, this is what we want you to do. And, and right now, we, we, we're sort of at a stalemate. It's a real challenge.
Larry?
Thank you, Larry. Uh, I, just two quick things. The first is, it, I'm, I'm, I can't be the only one here sensing the fact that it's five years now that we've done this. Every year, we get to precisely this point and we start trying to do something that we really don't think we can get done before either a town meeting or now before an election. I mean, this happens every year and, and, you know, I, I don't get a good sense that we could get everything that needed to be done between now and an election to make this meaningful. So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, Jim said something that, that, um, kind of, um, I, I, I kinda reacted to. You know, Jim and I agreed, mentioned how there's no, um, um, group of people who are really invested in town hall is, you know, not like the schools or the fire or the police or anything else. But maybe there is. Maybe if we portray this as, um, part of the ma, and it is really, it, it, it is part of the master plan. People always envisioned this as part of the master plan. There's hundreds of people who took part in that master plan. Why can't we work with the planning board, as you suggested, and, and try to harness those people and get those people to a town meeting and get them excited about this as part of the master planning process? Part of the revitalization of the downtown area in Foxborough. We've got a lot of things going on right now in a really positive way. We've got the IMA, which everyone, you know, knew during that, during that master planning process. Everybody knew that was an absolutely essential piece of it. We got the rezoning of the downtown. Everybody knew that that was an essential part of it. You know, so maybe, maybe that's a better strategy than to, to try to kind of veer off in a different direction. And that's doable between now and town meeting. You know, I'm sure the Planning Board has, you know, a list of names, and, and, you know, people could probably be amenable to getting involved in that process, so, thank you.
Thanks. I just want to ask the members, so first off, should we, as a board, affirm that we all agree that New is the route that this board wants to go? Secondly, should we have a vote? Do we want to stay in downtown?
Yeah.
And then, third, do we also vote to, as a group, actively work, you know, with Planning Board to, to bring that enthusiasm to this project? And, you know, we have to carry this forward.
Yeah, I think ultimately, Madam Chair, that you're, and the board members, you're, we're gonna have to get all muscle, all our collective support on this issue to make it happen. And it's gonna be, it's, at some point, it becomes a political campaign, which I don't be, I'm not part of. I'll provide as much information to it, but I'm not, I'm obviously not a political player here. But I will provide you with as much information as needed so that the board members can do the politics of that process.
Does that sound...
Do you want to take those one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to vote on the choice of building New versus renovation for Town Hall?
I'll make that motion to construct New rather than renovate the existing.
Second, discussion?
And just under discussion. And I know, I mean, from looking at it from day one, you know, it's got a cupola, it's got brick, it's got some shutters. A lot of people don't come to Town Hall, and they drive by, and it looks beautiful. But from an architectural, and a civil, and a permitting, and all those things that come along with it, I've never seen it make sense to put that much money to renovate it. And I'm fine, and this, I'm sorry, I forgot, is it Jack Schleyer?
Yes, Jack.
Jack, yeah. Who's a seasoned architect coming forward. And maybe, I think, I probably have heard it before, but not during the process as much, to say, you know, he was on the committee that said, you know, renovate it. But he's, as an architect, saying it doesn't make sense, which just makes it more...
I think he's arguing to leave the footings.
Leave the footings, but, but...
Yes, but I just wanted to add also, I was working with Dick.
Yep.
Hey, Dick.
Yes.
Dick was on one side of the issue, I was on the opposite side.
Correct, but I think publicly, we heard Dick's side. And not, not to discredit him, but that's constantly what we, we saw in the newspapers, in the editorials, and in the microphone. So it's a little, to see the other side today, saying there is a second side to that committee, that, from a seasoned architect, that knows the stuff as well, so... That's why I make the motion to, to reap, to build New rather than renovate.
Can you second to that?
I second it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the next motion will be to talk about the location, speak to the location.
Okay, I'll make a motion in the affirmative that the board of selectmen direct the building of a new Town Hall to be at Forty South Street.
Can I have a second? Second. Discussion, please.
Yeah. I think we need to look at the survey that was done with the master plan. There was four hundred and eighty-six respondents, which is less than four percent of the registered voters. I think we have an opportunity with the, the state election coming up to really bring in a larger percentage of the voters to the side. I know it's, it's probably going down a path that we may not like, but I think it's, we have to give the citizens a choice. We have to lay out the pros and cons. And I think that's one of the issues that the working group struggled with. They didn't want to make that decision. They wanted to leave it up to the, to the voters.
Yeah, and I understand when you say four eighty-six, but I've been to countless town meetings, and it is two, two and a half times the number that show up at town meeting. So, and granted, it's probably gonna be a robust showing, because it's casino, and it's, you know, it's government election. But the people that I saw at those meetings, and the people that were sending in the postcards, and the correspondence with the Planning Board, are the people that get involved. And those are the people that kind of come to the town all the time, and they're on our committees, and they're on our, you know, the people that are involved. So I, you know, four hundred and eighty-six might not sound like a lot, but it's...
It's the pulse of the town.
It's, it's more than what I see at town meetings constantly. You know, never, never mind a, you know, regular town meeting, a special town meeting when there's a passionate article on.
Well, I think for the benefit of the town employees, we have to, we have to do something, 'cause it's, it's not fair to them. And as employers, you know, I'm in business, Jim, you're in business, we're all in business. John, you own your own business. I mean, you wouldn't allow your employees to work in, in some of the conditions that are going on in Town Hall right now. And to let it fester as long as, as long as we have, you know, quite honestly, we should be a little embarrassed, and we need to do something. So whatever we need to do, we should, we should, we should do it.
Yeah, and I, you know, we say, oh, we supported it to, you know, but other than raising our hand and voting, nobody at this table, you know, you're new, but the past selectmen did a heck of a lot, other than, you know, once in a while. But if we want it, and I think this is the quickest way to get it, and it's the most focused, but we really gotta get off the dime and, and, you know, use the committees and use the people to, you know, not just talk the talk, but to get out there.
To walk.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I just have a question about the, we have to have, the auditorium right now, because of the special legislation for this rehab of the state hospital, it can only be used by law, right now, for recreational purposes. You're asking, you, you want Representative Barrows to introduce legislation to change the use from recreation to other municipal use, right?
Not at this juncture, no.
I mean, but, but that would, that would be what you would have to do.
We would have to do that. There'd be a second step.
And, and, is it possible, rather than change it to a municipal use, to actually introduce legislation to change it to commercial use so that it would go back to being on the tax rolls? Because right now, your argument for using that area is that it's, we're not getting any tax money anyway, and we can't get any tax money on it. So, so rather than changing to what, from recreation use to municipal use, can we just go the other way and say, you know what, give us, give us, we would like to have legislation to, to make it commercially? And then that area would be available for commercial development, up with the rest of the commercial development, up in that, up in that area?
My understanding is, as I recall reading the deed on that property, or the deed restriction, was that if that was in fact the case, we'd have to go back to the state, and the state would control it at that point. So it was, if it gets used for any other purpose, other than municipal purposes, or recreation, in this case, it says municipal recreation is what the term is used. If it goes for any other use, other than that, it goes back to the, to the director of DCPO, which is now a vision of capital, of projects. And they, and they determine what the use will be at that point, so...
But, but it's possible, it's possible to do that, so that we could put it...
Well, it goes back to the state. I'm not sure how the state would utilize it at that point.
The state's not gonna turn around and say, okay, here you go, here's, here's the land, go, go collect taxes on it. If, if we go back to the state, they would, they would want to sell it to you.
They may want to develop it, yeah. They may want to develop it for commercial use their own, have the money go back to the state. So that's, that's the other side.
No. Again, I, I think if this were not, if this were a purely logical decision, I think it'd be very easy to do that. It would make total sense to move the location to the existing recreation, the auditorium building. But I think it's, it's not that at all. It's really, it really is an emotional issue, and that's what came out in the whole master planning process. And so that's what makes the situation so difficult, when here we are, under every pressure, on the face of the earth, to work logically and work as a business, yet having to take into consideration that, so like Bill said, we're gonna get shot either way. But I, I think that we do need to listen to what the people who voice their opinion in the master plan, looking at the downtown develop, redevelopment plan that came out of that process. It's, you know, it's very clear that there was information solicited, and perhaps it wasn't in a black and white question, but it's definitely, the input was there, the participation was there. And, you know, I would support that, stay where it is.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that your point is very well taken, that the, this is an emotional issue. I mean, it's, I can tell you that, I mean, I've been through this process where logically, it made no sense. And Jim referred to that in some of the experiences he's had. There were, there were situations where it's not logical, it's emotional. And people have emotional ties to downtown areas, they just do. That's okay. You know, and if, if that's the, the will of this community to do that, I'm all for it. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna oppose that. I just, our job, our job was to try and find a solution, and that's what we're trying to do.
And I think just the process that this working group has gone through to get to this point, this is an incredible accomplishment to actually get us to these two really good choices, because we were really all over the place before.
Right.
And this really nailed it down, and, you know, just makes the decision that much harder.
No, but I'm supportive either way, so.
Any other comments? All those in favor of leaving the Town Hall at its current location? Aye? All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Oh, come on, Dave, you can't abstain. Come on.
Can you re-vote now, so you...
That was four zero one.
We can do a re-vote if you want to save some face here.
It's like a baseball game, come on.
Really hard, tough one.
That's a good, that's...
It's a tough one, it's, it's a tough...
There's some good questions on both sides.
I think it was more generalization of my work on the Planning Board.
Yes, that, you know, as a consensus.
That we're the ones who are passionate behind this.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful, you know. I'd love to see you do that.
So, maybe we can sit down and come up with a plan, Bill, as to really, what are the steps that we should be taking to really get out there?
It's all about a strategy, you know.
I think we need to have David on TV a lot more.
There you go.
And...
I, I think, I appreciate the debate that's going on here tonight, and I, and I appreciate all the insight that folks have provided, because now, you know, you've actually made our work a little bit easier, even though I know that wasn't, it didn't go a hundred percent way that everybody on the board wanted. But I think it's, our job is a little more focused now because of the discussion tonight.
Well, I, I think we have clear direction.
Yeah.
And now we can, you know, move forward with, with some conceptual designs and really focus on, on one site.
Yeah, you should move along faster now.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great discussion, thank you. Okay, so Bill, do you have a town manager update for us?
Just a, a couple items for you. One is that the, we are gonna be doing some paving over on Coca-Cassett Street all day tomorrow. And so for the listening public tonight, we just want to let you know that a detour will be set up, so only one-way traffic will be allowed from Mechanic Street moving forward to East Street. Traffic coming from Mansfield will be directed up east to Wall, Wallamote Park.
Wallamote Park.
How you say it?
The W Street.
W Street. And out to South Main Street with one last sign at Chestnut Street to complete the detour. Signs will be in place at each seat, each turn. Highway staff along with police details will be stationed along Coca-Cassett Street to deal with the local traffic. So we apologize for the inconvenience that folks will have tomorrow, but obviously, you know, road improvements are a necessary evil that we all have to deal with. And at the end of the day, we appreciate your patience, because at the end, the improvement will be well worth it, so. And then the, the New England Patriots have notified us that they will be hosting their annual in-stadium practice exclusively for residents and senior season ticket holders on Friday, August first, at July Stadium. The practice begins at seven P.M., but gates open at five P.M., parking is free, and stadium concessions will be open during the event. Residents interested in attending the event can pick up their complimentary tickets at one of the following locations, the Public Safety Building, the Senior Center, and Boyd and Library. We apologize for not being able to participate this year, but due to some scheduling conflicts, we don't have enough staff to actually cover that, that part this year, so to do that. So people on vacations, et cetera, so. So proof of residency is required to obtain the ticket, so be sure to bring your I.D. Prior to in-stadium practice, the community is invited to attend the 2014 Patriots Hall of Fame induction ceremony of former quarterback and three-time Super Bowl champion Ty Law on the NRG Plaza outside the Patriots Hall, the Hall of Patriot Place. And the ceremony for that begins at four thirty P.M. and is free and open to the public. All right? Tickets are being delivered to those locations as we speak, so, and so we, word delivered earlier today, so the tickets will be available as of tomorrow for anybody who's interested in that. And then I just wanted to, a couple of things that the, we, I am still continuing to work with the department heads on the goals. We, I worked with them this past week. We are gonna schedule meetings, individual meetings with groups now, the working groups on each of those goals, goal groups, to try and narrow that focus even further. So we'll be working on that with the next, during the month of August, and getting those things focused. And then the latest draft of the open, of the board's proposed Town Foxborough Open Meeting Law Complaint Procedure has been sent to you. I don't know that you want to talk about it tonight or not, but this is the latest draft with all the information that I have up to, up to date.
Can we put it back on for the next meeting?
Sure.
Would you mind?
Okay, all right. And then there is a document that was provided to you in your, in your information packet that I'd like you to look at, and hopefully, and then you can give me directions to how, if you want to have it on for discussion at the next meeting. I think if you want to move on this issue, particular issue, you're gonna need to address it sooner rather than later.
Can we, can we talk about that tonight? Because it sounds like it's gonna go out Monday or shortly after.
I, I haven't given any directions to send it out, so, so just so you know.
Well, my, I, when I read this, I, to be honest with you, I didn't know if I should laugh or cry at this point. You know, we met on July eighth, and we said, no more spending money on attorneys to contradict open meeting law complaints that we have. And we get a letter that's, looks like we need to discuss it, because it may go out next week, drafted by an attorney, by Attorney Gallerman, disputing or adding more information to one of the open meeting law complaints that was already issued by the Attorney General. So how does a meeting happen on the eighth, in the letter dated, that specifically said, if we want to do this, let's talk about it at the board? How does that July eighth turn into a July eighteenth letter from the attorney with information back to the Attorney General?
That, that information, the request was made prior to the eighth. I don't know why it took so long for it to be drafted, to be honest with you.
The request to...
The request to submit the information was before the discussion took place.
But he wrote, he wrote this letter on July eighteenth, which is Thursday or Friday of last week?
But so the, the request, the information was already submitted to him, prior to that, for him to be considered...
Submitted to...
Gallman.
By, by Bob Cutler?
Yes.
Through the selectmen?
Was that?
Through the selectmen?
No, no, it was not. He requested it prior to us having the conversation here.
See, this is what I'm concerned about, because, you know, this is talking about something about Mark Sullivan, and it's the exact opposite of what was discussed on our December meeting, where Attorney Gallman, Bob Cutler, and Mark all said that they had a phone conference. And now this is saying that they never talked about it. So which makes me want to call the attorney and have him work for me, so I can get a letter into the Attorney General. I, I, when is enough gonna be enough, that we stop spending the money on attorneys on the open meeting law and move on past this? This is, that's why, I, I don't know if I should be laughing or crying at this point.
Let me understand this. Bob Cutler took it upon himself to independently write his thoughts on paper and send it to the Attorney General?
Let me just explain to you what happened. When the, when the letter came out, Bob was actually away on vacation when it first came out. And so when he, he read it and came back, he said, you know, there's missing, missing information from this. I said, well, the only way to address that is just to, is to present, is to speak to the town council and have town council speak to the...
Okay, so when the Attorney General's opinion came out?
Yes.
Bob was away?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then Bob, Bob, learning of this decision, said that's inaccurate, so he took it upon himself to write this?
No, he, he came to me and asked me, and I said, the only way you can address that is to, is to speak to town council. And then we subsequently had the conversation about the policy.
But this letter was dated July, this was last Friday or Thursday?
I understand. That's the reason why I, I sent one, wanted the board to see this, because before we sent it out. Before I gave him directions to send it out.
Okay, so, in fairness, so let's put this on the agenda at the next hearing, and we'll talk about it. But in the meantime, you know, this is...
But in the meantime, you know, this is about Mark Sullivan and I think he needs to be present.
Yep.
I certainly want to chime in on it. And, and at what point do we move on past this? This is a violation that went through a process. The Attorney General said it's a violation. It's doing business outside of the table. And now it's taking more of our time to bring it back in, in yet another meeting on the same violation. And I'm coming down on you, but you came in in the middle of this. Let's just stop this. Let's move on. We've got three more of these coming, so we're going to clog up the system, you know, giving, uh, everybody's their own personal version of what happened.
But Jim, are you not, are you not interested in getting to the truth? Does this weigh?
I am, but let's do it at the table. Let's not do it through an attorney outside. And what, what, you were, you weren't at the last meeting. What we said was, if anyone has an issue about, uh, you know, we, we drafted this policy. If anyone has an issue, let's bring it to the table. We'll talk about it. Um, and, and let's not, you know, at some point, we're going to move on. This should be on the agenda and if, if this was written on June 5th by the Attorney General and it, it takes till July 18th, let's just put it on the agenda item, not as an informational thing in the back.
Well, the only reason I, I put it there was, was because it really, it was too late to put it on the agenda because I just received it on Friday. All right, so, and the agenda was already set for Friday, so.
Yeah, it's been this week or two weeks.
So, so at this point-
The reason why I did it that way was just to put it out there.
Okay, so how, you know, so this is one person's version about something that happened with a past selectman. So can someone reach out to Mark Sullivan and see if he's at all interested in giving his version? I can certainly call up the attorney and give him my version and draft up a letter. But I tell you, this is just maddening at this point.
But if it gets to the truth?
The truth, this, this, this is a dis- We went through a process, the Attorney General went through a process. One person says he hasn't got his side in there. So, you know, so, and what he's saying directly conflicts with what Mark had said. So all I'm saying, if that's the truth, then you need to hear it from Mark. You need to hear it from me. You need to open this up and we'll keep going down this road. But at the same point, I want to know how much this is going to cost the board and I want to know how much we've spent on this violation to tabulate it because I think it's just getting to the point of it's personal. You know, the violation was there. Let's move on. If it's not, I'm just not interested in keep spending money after this. I, I don't see the, the light coming out of this. And I said I wa, you know, I, I saw this in here. I said I wasn't going to get upset, but I'm, I'm, you know, it's just to the point of ludicrous.
With respect to, um, with respect to this particular item, uh, what happened was that it was all a matter of timing. I didn't expect, I didn't realize the letter was, in fact, I completely forgot about the fact that it's been submitted uh, because it's been, it's been so long. And I was surprised that it came out when it did. But having said that, I didn't feel comfortable sending it out because we'd already had the conversation at, at the policy level. So I said, "Let's, I'll put it in the packet and then ask the board that if they want to put it on their agenda for their next, next meeting for discussion."
And you guys want to put this on the, I mean, I'm, I'm asking to put it on there, but I'm one person. Do five people want to put this on there?
I don't want to do it at all.
It's the only way it can be, the only way it can be better.
Well, well, the process also speaks to what my concerns were, um, last week about the process of incomplete information, incomplete, maybe some parties may consider incomplete going in, forward without, you know, everybody seeing the information that's being submitted.
So in order to get complete information, I'm sorry, but we have to have Mark Sullivan in here because he's referenced.
Yeah, fine.
You know, at, at what point do we say, "Guys, there's more important things to do than this"?
Mm-hmm.
I know, I know. I mean, I already did the, the, uh, whatever we had to do, the-
Okay, so I, so I would, so I would make a motion, enough's enough. We don't send this to the Attorney General. We don't even bring it back to the table. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, all those opposed? So the motion carries four to one to not go to the Attorney General with more information on this violation?
Well, the matter's closed. Okay, thank you.
Are we done?
I think so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
David, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
We have things to sign.